Seven, all right. Dr. Nixon, are you going to be going to the head of the? All right, so we will get started. Thank you all for joining us today. We are, we are a little bit behind, we're an hour behind. We had scheduled two hours for this. So, of course, Dr. Nixon has, had given us the presentation last Thursday night. So, Dr. Nixon, I don't think that we need to do the presentation over, but if you would like to just hit the high points for us and then we will go to board member questions and, and comments and next steps. So with that, oh, Dr. Braybrand.
Ms. Evans, just one comment. While we're going over Goal Three, one of the things that came to my attention over the last couple of months was there had been an expectation when we were doing all of our review around our workforce that we complete a leadership team compensation study. And so we have information after you've finished your Q and A around work that we've done around that LT compensation study that we can share with you.
Okay.
And take any questions from that as well.
Do you want to do that all together or do you want us to, to finish up Premier Workforce?
So we can, we can finish up Premier Workforce. We know that we had two hours scheduled, so the title we are on Premier Workforce, we can then devote the remainder of the time to the presentation for the LT compensation and allow the board opportunity for conversation before going into calendars.
Okay, I, I think that, that sounds fine. So, Dr. Nixon, you're the one leading the conversation today.
So, thank you very much. Yes, on Thursday evening, we had the opportunity to present the Goal Three, Premier Workforce, strategic focus areas around our efforts to recruit, hire, and retain exceptional workforce and our market compensation goals and...
I beg your pardon. If everybody would just introduce themselves first.
Certainly, certainly, I'm sorry.
That would, I think we all know each other, but it would be good to, well, have the, yes, have for the public to know and for, and for the record too. Thank you.
Michael Drager, Director of Business Services in HR.
Sean McDonald, Director of Talent Acquisition in HR.
And Marty Smith, Chief Operating Officer.
So as we did our high-level overview of our Goal Three workforce presentation, many of the goal areas were obviously around our efforts at recruiting and retaining and hiring an exceptional workforce. And we shared various data slides and charts about the diversity of our workforce, our efforts throughout the division to maximize the things that we are doing to increase the diversity of our workforce, and the work that we are doing around ensuring that our market, market competitive salaries are within the 95 to 105 percent range, and the work that the school board has done over the past year to support the salary enhancements and the great efforts to making certain that we were compensating our employees and, and putting those needs first. So those were kind of the high-level things that, that we paid attention to in the workforce report.
Okay, and we did have quite a few comments and quite a few questions at the board table the other night. Were there any things in particular from the, the comments or questions that anyone wanted to address before we, we go to questions and comments here?
So, so there were several questions from the board and we've had an opportunity, Dr. Nixon won't say this, but I can say it for her, that she and her staff worked tirelessly this weekend to address many of the board's answers to some of the questions over the weekend. And we will be providing those answers in written format after the work session, but if there were any things that people wanted to have a discussion about, that we could certainly have that discussion today, again, as part of the Q and A. And if there are any other parts of the presentation from Thursday night where board members had a question, we could certainly answer questions or support the board's discussion about any topics that were presented on Thursday.
And I believe there was posted, is there a new chart posted? Well, we've, not that yet, but...
You have the, the chart that you requested for the comparison of the qualif, the diversity of the applicants and the hired versus applicant pool.
So that, okay, so that, that has been posted as, as one, one, one new chart.
Yes.
As well, and so, okay, very good.
And they put it up.
Ah, that's a good idea. Ms. Mulberg, could we put up the, the new chart? Just, this was something that I had requested to, to show the diversity of, on, on the hiring issue. So that, that is a new chart that's been posted for folks who, did, would you want to walk us through that, that chart a little bit?
So, so the request was to, can you scroll up a little bit? So the request was to do the comparison between the hired and the qualified by race. And if, scroll down a little bit more, there's a chart below it that has the end numbers of numbers of employees, yes. You wanted to see it in this format. And so it has the baseline diversity versus the 2017-18 diversity. Qualified applicants versus the hired teachers.
All right, so with that, do we have board members who have questions or comments? All right, I, okay.
So this, this chart was a request over the weekend from Ms. Palczek and, or Ms. Evans, and it was to see a comparison in the format. There was another chart that was the diversity of the county and it, and it looked different. And so we wanted to put this chart in the same format as that chart. And so what we have here is the comparison of teachers hired versus the teachers who were in the applicant pool by race. And so, for example, under this chart here, what it will show you is that while seven, seven percent of, say, Hispanic applicants who were in the qualified applicant pool, but six percent of them were hired. And in the end numbers, what it demonstrates is that 390, there were 394 Hispanic applicants and of those applicants, 109 were hired.
That we, what we were told the other night was that, that, that's being collected this year, that that is available.
Yes, so that, that data point is available for this past year, not for the 1718 school year.
So now I have Board Member, Ms. Kies-Gumar, and to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I'm really just trying to make sure I understand this and that it, I can understand it in context. So, of those which were, what percentage of, say, for example, you use Hispanic applicants, of those that applied, how, what percentage was considered qualified?
The seven percent were qualified.
Okay.
And of the seven percent, six percent were hired.
Okay.
I think, so I think, another way of, another way of saying, excuse me, excuse me. Of those who were qualified applicants, seven percent were Hispanic. Of those who were hired, six percent were Hispanic. That's what that's showing you.
Of the pool.
Okay. Of, of those who were qualified applicants, 12 percent were black. Of those who were hired, nine percent were black. That's what, that's what that's showing us.
I think, but Ms. Kies-Gumar's question, if I remember you asking this a couple times, is we have the end number of how many Hispanic applicants applied. What percentage of those Hispanic applicants were deemed qualified applicants for consideration? Like, was it 98 percent, nine, it would, no, because these are seven and seven, it's percent, not, it's taking the subpopulation. So they make up seven percent of our total applicant pool. We're, we're now saying, okay, go to just that subgroup alone. 100 percent of the Hispanic applicants who applied, what percentage?
What you're looking for is of the 394, we hired 109, which is like 25 percent, not 6 percent.
So, so again, it's going to the, the subgroup and saying, what percentage of the, the baseline number of applications were deemed qualified for then to be interviewed and hired? Because in the, if the application numbers, that, as Ms. Corbett Sanders was pointing out for Hispanics, at 394, but we hired 109, basically we hired 25 percent. But is that because only 25 percent of the, you know, what number was that, that we said of the 394, what percentage were deemed qualified and would proceed through our pipeline to be considered for hire? Because there, the end result was we, we hired 25 percent of the original applicant pool, but it might have...
Okay, so, so let's, let's do go in, in some order. Ms. Kies-Gumar, were you finished with?
Well, I, I guess that's...
And let's do the three minutes.
I was just really looking for clarification. I would have, it, it helps me to, I'm a visual learner, but I, I'm also, I need to hold it in my hand. So I'm, I just wanted, she's correctly stated my concern, what percentage, and you may have it up there, but I'm not processing it right now. What, of the, of the Hispanics applicants, what percentage was considered qualified? Qualified applicants, and then of that quali, of those qualified applicants, what percentage of those were hired?
So I'm going to ask Mr. McDonald to kind of walk us through what the hiring process looks like, and then we can get to answer the question about the overall pool and the percentages of individuals in those pools. And so we can explain...
I'm happy to walk through that, but just for the sake of connecting to my question, is it possible to answer that question?
And I think that that's where we're going to get to.
So Ms. Kies-Gumar, before we go on, did you have other, other questions for your turn? Okay, all right, so go ahead.
Sean, just one thing, so that we can get focused and help people feel good about where we're headed. I don't remember the original question from Thursday night, but listening right now, how many Latino, how many Hispanic folks applied? Of those that applied, how many were qualified? And then of those qualified, how many were hired? I think, right, we don't have that number for last year. We're collecting it for this year. That's what we shared Thursday night. So, I think that's the part that...
Do we have those numbers?
I just ran the numbers.
And I think at the bottom chart, at the bottom, you may be able to help show them to some degree, that storyline, but we haven't expressed that as a percentage of those. And I'll leave that to you and, and the team to share as appropriate.
All right, so just a little bit about the hiring process. So, and app, all of our applications come in through our brass ring portal, and each of those applications is reviewed by someone in the HR office to see whether or not an individual meets the minimum qualifications for a teaching position. That review, what's considered, makes someone considered qualified, we need to look at a number of different factors. Number one, an individual must hold at minimum a bachelor's degree. There are a few exceptions for the trades which are allowed under Virginia code, but the vast majority of positions do require that an individual holds that, that bachelor's degree. The second thing is that we need to look to see whether or not it appears the individual will qualify for a teaching license here in Virginia. And there are a number of factors that are looked at. We look at whether or not an individual attended and completed a teacher preparation program here in Virginia, and if so, whether or not they completed a student teaching component as part of that preparation. Or if it's someone coming from outside of Virginia, we're looking to see if they hold a valid current license from that particular state to see if we can utilize a route for reciprocity to bring them into a Virginia license. Teaching tests, praxis, or of the sort, are also reviewed as part of that process. Individuals meeting the minimum qualifications are marked as qualified. The folks that you're seeing on this chart are all qualified. So what you don't see is the folks that have been marked not qualified. So that means they haven't met the minimum, minimum criteria to be considered for a position. So I'm gonna, I have that information as well, it's not in the chart, and we can provide that as part of the follow-up, so you can see that broken down by each of the, the different racial groups. But for example, if we utilize...
Sorry, can you just clarify that one more time? Are the, the app, when you see the word applicant up here, it really is a euphemism for qualified applicant.
Qualified applicants, yes.
That's, that's a crucial...
Yes, so these are all qualified folks up here.
And the chart states that they're qualified applicants for 2017, 2018.
So, Ms. Kies-Gumar, did you have a next step that you wanted?
Well, obviously I would like the overall information.
So Sean, go ahead.
So the overall information being?
Who applied.
Okay, so percentage by, disaggregated by racial composition?
Yes.
Okay, so to, and so you'd like that...
I, I think it's, it's a little difficult to, to understand. He's got it.
Okay.
I do.
You want to tell me what you have?
Sure, I'll, I'll read what I have and ultimately, we're gonna follow up on this one in written form so that you can read it and digest it, because there's a lot of numbers flying around at this point.
Right, but let me help where we're going, because I think this is where we're getting confused and where the board wants to go. You want the total universe of the number of people who apply, total universe. Then you want a cut of those that are qualified that apply with praxis, licensure, whatever, because, right? That, that is this now number, the applicants is qualified. Then you want, and we're tracking this year, who's offered of the qualified. Aha, again, you all asked us and we are doing it, but this is a year data and I can't do when I was in my first year something that I was already by the time you told me. I'm just, just, just bringing us all back in Team FCPS here. And then, once we have the offer, who offered and then accepted or not accepted and their rates of acceptance. So next year, we'll be able to have almost all four nest, if you think about Russian dolls nesting, total applicants, total qualified applicants, total offered, and then those accepted.
Right, but it, to the extent that the information you described is available now, we would like to see it.
And we will provide that information as a written follow-up as the work session. So the, the group was working feverishly this weekend to provide some information to the board, and we'll be providing that, and Sean will walk through some of that right now. So we have the numbers in terms of the universe, but we haven't gotten it fully broken down by percentages yet. So Sean, if you will go through with that part of the, the data that you have.
Sean, do you mind if I ask a quick follow-up to what you said? For qualified, I know Virginia's trying to create new alternate routes, but we currently have some alternate routes. Are those considered qualified applicants as well, even if they don't have all of the licensure requirements for Virginia?
They are. So what we're looking to see is whether or not an individual may be enrolled in a, in a career switcher program as part of the review of the application, and in that case, they would be considered qualified. Additionally, if someone holds what's known as a provisional license, they're also marked qualified.
Okay, so I know there are like three different options, so all of those would be considered qualified.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna try and go in the same order that the, the information appears on the slide so that we have some consistency. So in terms of the number of Asian applicants, there were 104 Asian applicants that were marked not qualified, and we had 434 applicants that were marked qualified. And we hired a total of 137 of those applicants. Next, we have our Black or African-American subgroup. We had 167 individuals that applied that were marked as unqualified, 744 that were marked as qualified, and we hired 161 of those individuals. Next up is our Hispanic subgroup. With our Hispanic subgroup, we had 69 individuals that applied and were marked not qualified. We had 394 marked qualified and were considered. And then a total of 109 individuals were hired from that particular subgroup. Of our white applicants, we had 364 that applied that were marked not qualified. We had 3,917 that were marked qualified, and a total of 1,392 of those individuals were hired into teaching positions.
Thank you very much.
Not qualified or not qualified? Not qualified, 364.
Okay, so now I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
That was very helpful, thank you very much, because that's that middle piece that we, or one of the pieces we were missing. I did run the numbers, so I wanted to share with my colleagues that of the, those that were considered qualified applicants and given and eventually hired, 31.5 percent of the qualified Asian applicants were hired, 21 percent of the Black qualified applicants were hired, 27.6 percent of the Hispanic qualified applicants were hired, and 35.5 percent of the qualified white applicants were hired. Now what we're missing is who was offered a job, which would give us that middle piece, because it doesn't show whether we offered those jobs. Asian is 31.5 percent. And so, and, and the reason I ran those numbers is because when we say seven percent of the applicants and six percent of the hires, it, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that only six percent of that pool were hired. It's six percent of the total pool is represented by the Hispanic population. Nine percent of the total pool is represented by the Black population and, you know, so along those numbers, just so that people...
Yes, yes, this is a pool-to-pool comparison.
Right.
Ms. Mc, oh, Ms. McLaughlin, I'll come back to Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz.
So, I have a general, I think there are follow-on or next steps from a prior work session should be included in the next work session. That's just a universal, I've just decided as of today, we're always struggling, so that's just a universal. Yes, I had written, Dr. Braybrand, applicants, qualified applicants, offers and hires or acceptances. We need that, otherwise, you know, you don't understand the universe of the numbers as you're talking about. What I also would like to propose be added is the number of education graduates in the nation by subgroup and in Virginia by subgroup. You have that. That's great, you should give that to us. And, and how many of these hires were men versus women? How many? Do you know? I'd like, I'd like to know. Stop my time.
So I can tell you, and I'm gonna have to do some flipping, I have the not qualified men and women. So of all the applicants that were female, 582 were marked not qualified, and of all the male applicants, 192 were marked not qualified. And I need to search for the qualified, so I do have that, and we can include that as part of the, the charting, but I do have those numbers.
So let me, let me hypothesize that the numbers of males that we hire versus females is radically different. But I also posit that the number of education majors in the nation and in Virginia to females is radically different. So, Dr. Braybrand, I would incentivize in our next year, teacher contract, teacher hires for teacher, future teachers, I would incentivize young men to go into teaching. Because I will tell you that if we're under the auspices that who's at the front of the classroom is, influences the learning of the students in the classroom, then as the mother of four boys, then I should be looking to find, and I, I will tell you, in the history of their education, now there are more in high school than there are in elementary or middle school, but it was rare to find a male teacher in elementary school. I would say equally rare in middle school, and only by the time my students reach high school would they come across a male teacher.
I don't, if I may, Ms. Evans? If I may, and I don't know if we have it now, I'm back in the school system I went to and left, when we did it at the time, we had the same discussion, Virginia was in the bottom five of states for male representation in the teaching force. The bottom five of 50 states. So, we don't pay well.
I'd like an update on that statistic as well, where we are as a state, because it does go to how we message to young men about what their abilities are and that, you know, we're, we're shoehorning them into certain categories and indicating that, you know, you can't be successful in others if we never have a makeup in our own workforce that is representative of the student population.
And so if I may, I just, I do want to interject that we have many of the questions answered, or at least in a very basic form, from Thursday's school board meeting. We didn't have the numbers finalized or we could post and share because there's, there's still some scrubbing of the data. And so some of the questions that people are asking, so Ms. Schultz, some of the questions you asked about the universe of graduates and some of the questions that you asked on Thursday night, we'll be able to provide that to you as part of next steps from today. I just want to let everyone know that we have worked on and can provide some answers to those questions here, but wanted to make sure that we double-checked all of our numbers before we posted that information for the work session today.
And then the last point that I'd like to make is, I, I don't know what, if we're tracking our composition of applicants by veterans, but the, the intentional outreach, I mean, we have the nation's largest concentration of veterans in our county, and for late, late career, or second career or third career transitioners, that's a tremendous opportunity for us and what role we're playing in helping veterans transition into second career opportunities and bringing that leadership into our classrooms. I'd be interested to know that.
All right, thank you very much. I'm now gonna go back to Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I, I wanted to ask a little bit more detail about the Teachers for Tomorrow program. I know it was shared last Thursday and we're very appreciative, Dr. Braybrand, that you recognize the ability to grow our own out of an exceptional school district is going from, I believe you said, we have six programs now, hoping to grow it to 11. Is that the number?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, doubling that would be excellent. I know Ms. Kies-Gumar and I and Mr. McElveen, we were there with Dr. Braybrand and Ms. Corbett Sanders to celebrate the teachers, or the, the young students, the seniors, who are now being offered contracts upon completion. But one thing I would really like to better understand, especially since we're promoting the program, is exactly how we're vetting and selecting and offering those future contracts. So as a next step from this work session, I, I would like Dr. Braybrand to get that detail and have it broken out by the high schools that currently host the program. Because when we were looking at the, the program itself, you could see that there was some differences among the six high schools on, on which students were being offered those future contracts. So it would be helpful for us as a board to just have an understanding of, it's, it's ... It's, it's great to grow our own, but obviously, we are also fortunate to have exceptional public universities here in Virginia where we know students are graduating from our high schools, attending there and then coming back. And I wanna make sure that it's kinda like, when we, we look at the maturation and the growth of students, as an 18-year-old, they could go on to college and be phenomenal candidates. And I wanna make sure we don't give away necessarily spots too soon and not giving a chance for, for all others to compete for these jobs. And then I'll just reiterate what my other colleagues have said. And, Dr. Braybrand, you're correct, this is something that you kind of, you inherited, this board's request, but has been shared before. The deeply problematic study that was done by George Mason researchers and the inaccurate conclusions that were drawn from, because they did not have the necessary data to make the conclusions that they did. The only way we can inoculate ourselves from that and also reassure the public of our commitment is to have the data. And so, I, I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that we didn't have it for the 2017-18, because I believe this all happened before then, but it was prior to your tenure and prior to Ms. Nixon's tenure, so we'll, you know, we'll just have to wait for that data. But it's, I think, as a division, as a board, I wanna prepare everybody with this report, we, we need to be very mindful of how we communicate that in saying, this still doesn't have what we know is an essential piece, which is how many offers we gave out. And then I'll, I'll just take a go-back for my other questions.
So I, I don't see any other hand, so you can continue on, Ms. McLaughlin.
So, if I may, Ms. McLaughlin, so, so when we look at the 2017-2018 data, this was a look back. And one of the issues that we had with this particular report, being first, so we're the first ones to go with a new format, is that we're looking at old data and applying new targets and metrics to old data. So, we're looking at the data that we have with regard to hires and we didn't have certain processes in place that we have in place now. And if you remember some of the discussions that we had last year about the hiring process and the changes that we were going to make to the hiring process, some of the additional areas for oversight with regard to how principals share the number of individuals interviewed and that information with Mr. McDonald's office, we have that information, and so moving forward, reports specifically on this year's data will be provided to the board to give you exactly what you're looking for. The offers and the, those teachers who then either declined those offers or accepted those offers. So that's going to be a very important part of the data. The issue that was, the biggest issue for us was acknowledging that we were looking at 17-18 data and didn't have a lot of those processes in place, so it was very difficult for us to share that information. We can build that into the report, so it's communicated to the public, into the presentations, that it's important to note that this is older data and that moving forward, we can provide that. Now, because of where we were in the reporting process, we do have some of this data that we are going to share with the board, and we'll have to be very clear that that's based on data that we have to date for this year, and that was part of some of the next steps from Thursday's school board meeting. But we'll have to be very clear with the board and the public that that's data that we have currently, and we will again be sharing that data next year, because that's the look-back for this year. So, it, it's, we were in, in a bit of a difficult position because we're using old data and trying to marry that old data with new targets and new metrics. So, we appreciate your patience as we're doing that work and have heard you loudly and clearly about the information that you're looking forward or looking for moving forward.
Thank you, and I do have, I have a couple more people saw, put you on go-back.
Thank you, that's fine.
Ms. Moon?
Okay, just, just a couple of questions regarding some of those data. Could you, could you restate the definition of qualified applicants? Is that the, the way I understood was meeting the minimum standards?
That's correct, so, again, the minimum standard would be holding a bachelor's degree. The appearance that an individual would qualify for a teaching license based upon the documentation that's provided to us.
Okay, thank you, that was, that's how I understood. And I know that we don't have a data for offer, actual number of offers among subgroups, amongst, we don't have that. But is it possible going forward, going forward, to collect the data? Let me put it this way, it's gonna be somewhere between, somewhere between actual offers and qualified applicants. For example, a number of offers will be limited by number of positions available, basically. But your employer may find himself or herself, this time this is a building administrator or department heads for other, other positions, could find the situation where you have number of, let me put it this way, highly qualified applicants who can do a job. You could take any one of those, but you can only offer to one person while two people, et cetera. Whether we can even collect what a potential employer might deem to be offer-deserving applicants? Now, those are the ones that employer or person who's gonna be hiring fewer comfortable in extending an offer. Might not have actually extended an offer because there's a limitation in number of positions, but any one of those could do the job, whether we can ever collect that data.
So I think that's gonna be difficult to capture, but I think we have a number of other metrics that support in different ways what you're getting at. One being that we're out recruiting and, and trying to bring strong candidates on as early as possible, and we're offering them an opportunity to sign with Fairfax County Public Schools, what we call an FCPS contract or what used to be called an early hire contract. So we're front-loading those folks into the hired pool and then looking to place them at a later time. And so, we've, we've already collected that group and, and I think we're doing a better job of hiring more folks earlier in that fashion. And so I would deem those as our really highly qualified individuals, those folks that we really wanna go after and we're proactively bringing them in. In terms of making the separation within the, within the system as we're marking each application, I'm not sure that that's entirely possible. I think a lot of that information comes from an interview.
That is fair, if you cannot collect the data, I cannot collect the data. Just wanted to see, because that might also give us some indication as to whether there is any, any bias in, in making, extending actual offer to, you know, deserving applicants, deserving applicants. And since you mentioned about old hi, early hires, FCPS contracts, you call them, could you give us ratio or breakdown of those early hires?
We can, I don't have that for you right now, but we'll, we'll add that to the list.
You can give us the latest numbers.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a couple of go-backs, I, I will just briefly make one comment, and I think this is where a number of us are, are looking at this. And I, I may have confused things, but I had asked that this chart be pulled out just so I could see it side-by-side. It, it didn't intend that this conversation would be all focused on just this, this one chart. But my comment is, if you look at, I, I know we need to look at offers. That's something that all of us have said, we need to look at offers. But the fact of the matter is, we have 1,138 African-American and Hispanic qualified applicants, and of those we hired 270. So it seems to me that there is plenty of room there for, for potential. And I think that's something that we have to look at as a, as a metric in the future. With that, I have two go-backs, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Sorry, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Palchek hasn't taken a turn.
Thank you, and I appreciate going after Ms. Evans, and I agree, while I know we're looking at the other numbers, being able to break out where we have that gap and whether it's, you know, I know in, we've started some outreach and, and I think Potomac School does a large diversity hiring fairs for independent schools, so, you know, what we can do more, because I know as a teacher going into new schools, I wanted to feel that my school better reflected, you know, where I was coming from and both to hire and retain teachers and teachers of color staff. I know that's important, so whether it's helping schools by schools figure out, right, what's helping attract teachers and accept those offers. I know part of it is money, part of it is the culture and feeling, you know, accepted and at school, so I think we need to continue to dive into that. But this is the first step, and there's a lot of data, and hopefully we can get a better way to how we share it and analyze it. And then I did have, oh, now it escaped me, but I had another question, I may have to do a go-back. I'll do a go-back on that, thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders? Did you have a response?
Just to, just to say that in the written responses that we'll provide, we'll be able to detail all of the initiatives that we've put into place to ensure that we're recruiting applicants that are better reflective of our community. We're doing, you know, a variety of different things to, to reach out to folks that are going through traditional pipelines, but also looking at our Grow Your Own initiatives, the Teachers for Tomorrow contracts being one of those, our IA2 Special Ed Teacher Cohort being another. The evidence thus far is that we're, we're seeing greater diversity with those Grow Your Own pipelines, because we have a very diverse student population and a very diverse community. And so, we're gonna continue to push in that direction while still touching upon those various opportunities throughout the, the nation in terms of opportunities to connect with applicants at more traditional job fairs.
And I would add that HR continues to work with our principal partners and our admin teams at the school level, increasing the number of administrators and teachers that have become recruiters with us and ambassadors for the programs. And then those continuing conversations with what is the interview experience like at the school and, and the different ways that principals and admin teams can also help to do the recruiting as well.
Thank you, and that, recall my quick question, one of them was around that, is trying to understand in such a large system, if we're kind of analyzing school-specific in their recruitment initiatives versus county-wide, because in the end a teacher, well, sometimes they're, they're applying to the whole county and sometimes they're applying to a specific school, so maybe if we could break that down. And then my other question was, I forget what it's called, but I know there, there had been some questions in the past about that, I believe it's a Pearson survey we have teachers take, who are, who are applying.
The Gallup survey.
Gallup, thank you. If, it looks like we're still using that, if you could give us more information, I think we'd consider not using that on, that decision.
I would just like to also add that with some of the changes that we've made to the hiring process, HR staff will be working very closely with our regional offices to look at data by school, to see the applicants who have come in that principals are inviting in for interviews, and we can compare that data to diversity data and have conversations with principals if we see that their applicant pools aren't necessarily as diverse as they could be, or if their hires aren't diverse when you're looking at qualified candidates. So, as we get that information this year, we will certainly be sitting down with our RAS and EPs to go over that, that data, so that they can have those conversations with principals at individual schools.
Thank you, and now I have two more first times, so thank you for your patience, Ms. Corbett Sanders, for the go-back, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Evans, do you have an answer to the Gallup question, survey or questions?
I do, so I know that this was a topic of conversation at the MSAOC committee meeting, and Dr. Nixon being new, we've really started to have conversations about whether or not that tool's meeting our needs, and we're, we're continuing that dive into that, to that conversation. We've met with the, the vendor once, and, and we have another meeting on the books with them to really continue that dialogue, but we're continuous, we're continuing to make an assessment about whether or not we're gonna continue with that.
I'd like to hear that follow, because my understanding from that meeting is most of the principals said they were not using it, and so that would be helpful information. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thanks, and, and I guess I'm sort of still trying to understand what's up here in front of us, and so some questions I have just are really basic questions. So when I look at the baseline hired line and I add up the numbers that are in the bar graph, it comes up to 96%. But then when I add up the numbers in the applicant percentages, it adds up to 91%. Can you explain like what's happening there, shouldn't they be equal and where are the other percentages to cut up to 100%?
Well, and so we have some candidates who choose not to provide their race or ethnicity. We have some candidates who fall outside of these categories, so that's why our numbers don't fully add to 100%.
So 9% is unaccounted for in the case of applicants?
Depending on the data that we have for any given year, we could have those individuals who choose not to indicate their race.
Okay. Okay. Similar to that, when I add up the hired teachers line in 27-18, it comes to 96, and then the same thing happens in terms of the 27-18 applicants, that comes up to 92? Is that correct? Do you have the same issue going on here, we've got this, this leakage in terms of the numbers that we know?
And, and this is because you're looking at two different pools, so you have your qualified pool of candidates and then you have the actual hired. And so you could have individuals who are in the hired, or in the qualified pool who aren't giving us their race or ethnicity data. So that's why those numbers are, are different for those particular pools. But we do look at the percentages, so, in, in going back to the overall makeup of your applicant pool, we would want then the pool of hired candidates to match the makeup of the applicant pool.
Okay, so.
So we're looking for a one-to-one.
Right, and so, so then when I look at the percentages in the chart, it adds up to 91% in the applicant total, but it's 92% in the bar.
I think there might be two additional factors playing in here. One, these are whole numbers, so there's a rounding factor that we need to consider. And two, we do have a small group of individuals that fit into the Alaska Native category, Pacific Islander category, so.
We're talking about qualified applicants in both places, right? For the same time period, the same thing, right? Qualified applicants in the chart and qualified applicants in the bar.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so they should add up the same? Or is that, am I not understanding it? One shows 65% white in the, in the bar, and then it says 66% down in the chart.
Again, that could, that could be a rounding error, so we'd have to look at the, the numbers very closely on that, but in, in using decimals, it could be a rounding error.
Well, also, the, the number, the, the people who are hired, it's a different pool than the people who are qualified, it's a different pool.
Right, but this, aren't the applicants, the qualified applicants, when I see the chart, isn't that, when it says 66% applicants, isn't that the same qualified applicants above? 65%?
Yes.
Yes, so I, I see, I see the issue that you're talking about, and again, it says 65 above, it says 66 below, we needed to check our numbers a little more closely. Again, we wanted to make sure that we had the time to check all of our data. We did share this shot slide because there was a request to, to share the slide, but we haven't shared all of the answers from Thursday night, because we're still ensuring that we double-check our numbers so that we provide accurate numbers to the board.
Okay, so this may be along the same lines, just to confirm the accuracy of the numbers. So, saying in the chart, it shows 39-17 is the total number of white qualified applicants. And then it shows 74% hires. But when I divide 39-17 by the total of qualified applicants, 54-89, I come up with 71.36%. But when I divide 3917 by the total of qualified applicants, 5489, I come up with 71.36%. Is that also rounding error? Or am I misunderstanding how the data?
So again, we're looking at the individuals in a particular pool. So if you look at the pool of qualified applicants, we break that down so that you can see the percentages by white, Asian, Hispanic, and black in the overall pool. And then when you look at the pool of hired teachers, we take that entire grouping of individuals and break that pool down by diversity. And so that's why we're getting different numbers. What we want to have is if we have 12% of our applicant pool is African American, then we would want to ensure that 12% of the hired pool would also be African American. So that's the one to one that we're looking for. We want to get closer to our hired individuals in the hired pool looking like the applicant pool.
Yeah, maybe I'm not being clear.
Okay. So Mr. Wilson, if you'd like a go back, your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay.
Let me say this. We've looked at this chart for an hour. Sometimes you just got to be real. We went round and round when we started as staff to come up with how to best do this. I don't think we found the magic chart yet. And because when I arrived, this was such a big issue, a community issue, it remains a big issue to this board. We're going to, we'll work on getting the numbers for Thursday and follow up. But we're going to continue to look about how to tell the story in a way that people can understand all the pieces. And one thing that, you know, hasn't even come up, but just listening, and I'm my own thinker and learner, one of the things you mentioned, practice scores, Mr. McDonald, is I recall, and maybe it's changed since I last dipped into it, Virginia has one of the highest practice cutoffs of any state in the United States, if not the highest. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
When you think about practice and standardized testing, standardized testing, practice scores tend to be disproportionately negative against diverse applicants. So I don't know if we've run the numbers to see whether the reasons for the disqualification that you quoted the numbers, whether, what those causes are, how much of those are driven by practice scores? How much are driven by course, lack of course completion? And so there's several pieces, I think, still to this story. Mr. Moon, you're asking your earlier question, which is a key, interesting question. Does going earlier, one, we know it helps lower vacancies. Does it help us with diversity? Can we, does our offer rate for diverse candidates go up if we make offers earlier and get to that pool earlier? So I think there's a lot of pieces around this. We still have work to do. And we're going to get better at presenting the story because it's an important story and how we tell it, I think is important for the community and for the board to make sure you feel we're headed in the right direction that the board wants us to.
And another thing is I think about future reports. So as we look at the metrics and targets that we currently have that the board has approved, as we prepare this for next year, we're going to go back to this work session and go back to the next steps to ensure that the types of questions that the board has raised today will be part of the reporting process next year. So this is that first time out from our old process to the new process and trying to adhere to the targets and metrics that the board provided us. So we're going to take those in addition to, you know, some of the questions, it's like the FAQs that we get at these meetings. We want to make sure that we provide that as part of the full report so that we don't have these questions again next year.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I think that high process score was set 20 years ago, maybe. And I know there have been complaints about it ever since they set it and there was a lot of pushback, but it was set where it was. Anyway. Okay, different question. Career switchers. I know some years ago, we made some changes. I would love to know as a follow up, where we are with how much credit we give for years served in other school division as a teacher? Sort of what provisions do we have pay wise for career switchers, what that looks like right now? You don't have to answer me now, but as a follow up. Thanks. And also military, kind of where that training. And then I guess as the other piece, do we get many career switchers out of the IT industry or do we just lose them all to the IT industry? That would be the other interesting question because we know that's where the pay is a whole lot higher. Thanks.
We can get that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have a few go backs. I just want to do a time check before this. We're almost at 2:30, which was when we were supposed to finish both of these conversations. Of course, we were an hour behind. Just want to remind people, we do have an entirely different conversation about LT compensation coming up in a presentation. So I would like to wrap this up as quickly as possible. Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Yes. Just a suggestion on adding clarity and to address Mr. Wilson's question. I would actually add a fifth block there at the bottom on the matrix that is unreported that demonstrates those folks that have not reported what category they fit in. I also, on Thursday night, I asked a couple of questions I look forward to hearing from. I'm glad Ms. Schultz followed up on the question about career switchers for military because that's something of great concern in my community and I have, I raised it then as well. Growing your own, thinking that maybe we need to reach out to the county government on growing your own as well because of the number of people in county government that might want to transition over into teaching if we were to help them with getting credentialed. Return on investment is a big portion of this report. I am so glad that you actually are looking at the ROI. So you can get rid of that chart for now. I'm actually focused more on the ROI in the report. And I would love to know a bit more about the retention. It says 93% and 91% I think in different categories, but it doesn't really talk about retention in the first five years. And that's, it's not on the slide, it's in the report itself. And that ROI on retention, really, we need to better understand and unpack that and unpack it in those categories. So we know whether or not we are losing people in a certain subgroup. And then the last is I look forward to getting a bit of a deeper dive on how this changes as a result of our work in the principal pool and what we need to do in the principal pool going forward. We need to have an update here. And this should be a next step on that as to where that is right now.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah. So I appreciate following Ms. Kiesgumara because I too want to, Ms. Corbin Sanders?
That's okay. We're fine.
Actually, I'm following both of you because I'm going to end up going with Ms. Kiesgumara too. Good point. But to Ms. Corbin Sanders, the issue about return on investment, I would like to actually have a step more depth to that. So A, want to thank you for making that a part of the report. It's very valuable. But as I read the report, I wanted to have just sort of a better sense of when we talk about return on investment. So what do we spend on, you know, total for the year for recruitment? And then what did it actually then yield where we can say we put in X hundreds of thousands of dollars? Hopefully not a million. And then what did we end up getting in terms of specifically? Let's say, for example, I've had principals tell me in the past, I'm not saying we do it now, that they would say, we went up to Penn State, we went to a job fair and we were recruiting to get these wonderful new graduates out of Penn State. What was the yield? And I don't mean we have to drill down to every single specific university where we went and did that. But what is our on the road recruiting where we send our principals and it's at a cost? And then from those recruitment efforts, what did we yield? Because that's the part that I think we need a little more depth in the report too. That would be helpful because then it enables us to hopefully, in partnering with all of you, provide some good feedback about is this yielding what we would hope for? Because as we know, Dr. Braybrand, every year we talk about our overcrowded classrooms. So every time we spend $75,000, it could be a brand new teacher we would have hired instead. So that's just where my brain always kind of goes to is hopefully what we're doing is going to yield what's mission critical for us. And then I know that some of my other colleagues are going to be asking just a little bit more details about some of the demographics in terms of our targeted efforts. And so I'll leave those questions to others. But I wanted to say to Ms. Schultz's remarks that the data we can get specifically, I think, to Virginia, but certainly nationally, about what do the graduate percentages look like coming out of our teacher and schools of education at the undergraduate level? What does that look like so that, not just to help the board, but I think most importantly, to help our community to understand that this is where our pool looks like. And as the 10th largest school system in the country, maybe we need to be part of this national voice that talks about the need for encouraging more and more student populations, both at the middle school and high school level, but then also partnering with our universities to say, what are you doing to capture and engage more students to consider the profession of education? But for now, when our community is going to reflect and review on how good is Fairfax County in its diversity of hires, including as Ms. Schultz says, our gender diversity? Well, you've got to go with the population that exists. So overall, Dr. Braybrand and staff, I want to say thank you for the 25-page narrative. That's really helpful to me in terms of getting a little deeper to the work you're doing. And I also appreciate Dr. Nixon that, you know, you've kind of come in midstream. You're doing a lot of great work with our Human Resources Advisory Committee at looking at best practices and bringing in the Society of Human Resources Management, you know, SHRM as it's known. And they're located, I believe, here in the DC area. Yeah. So I see a lot of growth opportunity for.
If you could wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
I just want to say I see a lot of good growth opportunity for our Human Resources Department that you just need more staffing.
Thank you.
Yourselves.
Ms. Kiesgumara?
Thank you. I'll agree with all her compliments and won't repeat that. Wanted to look at the Teachers for Tomorrow. And I know this is new, but it'd be great to have some breakdown of what it looked like in terms of what contracts we gave out. I did notice when we were at the ceremony, and I think Ms. Corbin Sanders mentioned, there hadn't been any from her particular school in her pyramid. And so I'd like to see if we could get that. We need to start monitoring that early and maybe figure out, maybe it's a matter of whether teachers aren't really pushing it in that particular school. But, you know, those are certainly schools where we want to make sure our kids know that we want them to come back home to. Let's see. So I also wanted to comment, and I'm sorry, I may not, I'm not sure I saw it when I looked through things, but I know we changed things over under your predecessor, making it more centralized. But I also know that the statistics suggest that when you have a diverse hiring pool, you tend to get higher, a more diverse staff. And so I don't know if we've looked at that as to how, you know, we can kind of address that particular concern because I do notice that the needle didn't move a whole lot since we changed over. And I'd like for us to look at that as a possible concern. So I'd like to see if we can get some diversity kind of input in some way. And then the last thing, I'm trying to hurry up before Sandy tells me stop talking. And I'm wondering, have we had any follow up with folks that were offered jobs or went through the hiring process? Whether they accepted or not, to try to figure out, you know, whether that component had something to do with them accepting or not accepting, you know?
Were there reasons they did not accept?
Yes. Yes. So we can, I know we're throwing a lot at you, but I just would like to, if we can at all, figure out what is happening to justify some of the numbers that we have.
So for the candidates that did not accept, we did ask and have it broken down by some of the reasons for why they did not accept, but only for this past year, not the 1718. Yep.
That information would be really.
We'll provide that in writing as a follow up response.
Next year's report's going to be beautiful. It's going to have all the, I can tell you, no. And I say that tongue in cheek, but again, we were trying to marry old data with new targets and metrics. So as we think about next year's report, it's going to answer a lot of those questions that board members have asked about our current practices and our current data sets. And so we'll be able to certainly answer those questions. And we'll be going to this work session and all of your follow up questions to ensure that we're giving you the right flavor for next year's reporting process.
And to the extent that we can, I don't know that we can, it would be great if those folks who are leaving, we could get similar information who leave our system. Okay?
Through the exit, right.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, did you want to go back or did you not need to go back?
No, I think maybe you were right. It is a next step that to the extent we're showing percentages, we show both the numerator and the denominator so we can easily determine how the percentage is calculated.
So we'll add that as a next step then. All right. Ms. Schultz?
So I'm sorry, in the amount of time that we've had since my last one, did you get the calculations for men? Stop that time. I don't like the staccato, fire a whole bunch of questions at them and then they fire answers back.
Let's let them have, why don't you keep on going, Ms. Schultz?
Well, I already did. I asked in my last one. This is in my go back. I've been waiting for this.
So the male qualified was 1,402?
Was not qualified?
Qualified.
1,402?
Correct. And then the female qualified?
Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry. I wasn't understanding what you were doing. Okay, male qualified, 1,402?
Correct. Female qualified, 4,545. And that's reflective of what's coming out of the schools of ed, which is about 80% of the.
And of the 1,402 male qualified, you had 582 who were not qualified in addition?
In addition, yes.
And then how many were hires? 190?
I think it was 321?
No, for males. Last time you said it was 190.
Right. So I have 321 hired.
No, I heard 582 were not qualified. Okay.
So I'm.
I'll copy from my neighbor. I'm allowed to cheat. I'm allowed to cheat on that one. The other thing is, the other thing I have a question on is where are the openings? How many, so I calculate from the hires there, that's 1,799. I assume that's not all we hired? How many did we hire?
We hired 1,873 during the reporting period. And so we opened schools.
Okay, that's okay. So the gap analysis for my colleagues is that represents 1,799, but there were really 1,873 hired. That's what we need explained. And then in what areas of the system were those openings? Because we don't just hire like teacher, we hire by, I'm assuming, like.
Right, right.
Well, I don't even know if we do that. But do we have any more refined categories, like for the sciences?
We do. So the vast majority of the openings were special education and elementary, grades one through six teacher.
We also need to understand where the openings are because it could be that applicants are applying for, they may be a qualified applicant, but are we getting enough applicants in particular areas? And I'm assuming there are certain areas that we have low applicant, you know, status in. And it would be interesting to see what the diversity is hiring by category. So we need to know that. And then somebody brought up retention. We need to understand what the retention is. I'm not worried about our first five years because we're at a national average on the first five years. And you don't want to artificially retain people who don't want to be retained, again. You know, at some point, your effort to retain people, you may be retaining people you don't want to stay. I understand, but it's not a question of the first five years. It's a question of retention, period. Who are we retaining and who are we losing? That, I mean, that's really, when you say, Dr. Braybrand, the universe. The universe is not only the question on hiring, but, you know, anybody can take a reservation. Can you hold a reservation is the answer. So I will be interested to see the rest of that whenever we're going to get this again. So I will be interested to see the rest of that whenever we're going to get this again.
Thank you. And I have Ms. Palchak, and then we'll go to next steps. Oh, you're okay, okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call up the next steps? We'll go through them and then we'll move on to our next discussion. Okay, let's go up. All right, Ms. Schultz, you have the first one. Number of education graduates by season. Okay, all those who are, want to see that information, raise your hand. Okay, we'll go with that. And by the way, Mr. Smith, what I heard you say before is that you did collect all of the information that the board wanted from Thursday night, and you're working on that.
Yes, we had 25 questions from Thursday night.
So we don't need to capture all of those things from Thursday night?
Exactly.
Just additional things from today.
That's been captured, and we will provide that as additional information for the follow-ups.
Excellent, excellent.
So the military's already been captured from Thursday?
It has been captured, yes.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Schultz, you have the second one.
Number two is not considered, because I would like to hear what this is. So I think it needs to provide to the board what the recruitment efforts are for veterans and military career switchers. And then we can explain whether there's any consideration for expanding those efforts.
Provide to board what recruitment efforts are. Okay, Ms. Palchak, did you have a comment?
Just provide recruitment efforts for military and career switchers to the board.
We can provide that. We have extensive outreach for military and career switchers.
Okay, so that's information.
What the results are. Like, you're doing it, but what is the result?
Ms. Palchak, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Sean, I have a question for you, and I was going to ask as a follow-up. For international applicants who maybe have a bachelor's from an international university, do they fit within our traditional qualified applicants, or are they outside of that boundary? And are they considered career switchers as well?
So it depends, is the answer to that. So depending on what their background was in their home country, they may or may not be considered a career switcher. Ultimately, there's a pathway for individuals that hold a degree outside of the United States to have that evaluated. And there are specific accrediting agencies that the VDOE accepts. They take a look at that, and then we use that document along with the others to determine what pathway they may fall under.
And do we currently have any recruitment efforts for them?
So we don't, in terms of going out internationally to recruit teachers?
No, because we have a large in-migration currently.
So we're utilizing our traditional pathways at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I think, a show of hands of how many want to see that. That's everybody. Ms. Keys-Gamara and Ms. McLaughlin, you have the next one?
She can comment, but I was asking for demographic information of those who received contracts. I know it's a new program. No, it's...
And geographic.
Right, and geographic for the Teachers for Tomorrow program.
That's it. And is that going to combine with number three then, or is that a separate? Are we, because, how are we vetting applicants?
It seems like the first one is, the first one, the question is, how are we vetting the applicants? And then the second one is the...
Goes with number four.
Okay, so, all right, so let's just end, let's go to number three then. How are we vetting applicants for the Teachers for America program? All those who want to see that, okay, good. Provide data on demographic and geographic information on contracts. So, all right, how many people want to, number four? How many support that? All right, that's there. Provide racial breakdown of early hires. Does that capture it, Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Okay, how many are supportive of that? Okay, that's...
Can we make that more inclusive and say that it's not only racial, but it's also...
Gender.
Yeah, male and female, thanks.
Can we also have all subgroups then? Because it's more than just gender, it's people with disabilities, people that are...
Is five related to four? It's something else?
No, no, this is about early hires.
Our early hires are just...
Just all early hires.
Okay.
Yeah. Great, so Mr. Moon, is that all right with you? Provide breakdown by all subgroups for early hires. How many people support that? All right, that, we're good on that. Ms. Palchak?
Yeah, so it's now very long, but essentially, it was to compare school-specific versus county-wide initiatives on trying to increase our diversity. So I don't know, and it looks like you're working with principals, so any of that information you can share, any trends we've seen, and some of your proposed, I guess, I don't know what the next steps will be from those conversations, for us to be able to see how specific schools are also working to increase the diversity at their schools.
I want to understand the question. School-specific versus division-wide? I mean, if you have division-wide, we have division-wide. So what...
Let me, Dr. Nixon?
So I was just going to say that in terms of answering these questions, what I think what will also kind of fulfill a more robust answer is to also tap into my RAS colleagues to get a sense for the kinds of conversations that they also have with their principals about looking at the demographics at their schools and making intentional hires. And I know that some principals, I think part of their process is, when there's a new hire, there might be a school tour. I mean, there might be some best practice around how in that recruitment effort or that, hey, come to my school effort is happening school by school, that there's some unique and best practices for making sure that candidates have a really great experience at the school level and feel welcome. So I'm sure that there are some conversations that they have that I can tap into to kind of help round out this answer.
Yeah, and I appreciate, because I guess what I'm trying to get at with this question is really, we're starting with conversations, right? And we've made some very specific steps as a county. But at some point, especially as a board, we're going to want to see those conversations become across-the-board practices, right? And so, while I know it's not easy to rush that, right? To change culture is very challenging, whether it's, yes, from the RAS, there's a list of things that are done, especially from schools where we see they've done a very good job of recruiting and retaining. I guess that's where I'm seeing the division, full-division data, but by-school data, and then best practices, I think, would be helpful to have.
Are you asking for every single school to have the, all the data broken down by... No, I think it's going to be more anecdotal, just talking with the RAS colleagues about some of their overall best practices. So would that be compare sample, school-specific? I mean, Ms., because I'm a little concerned about...
I guess there's a difference between data and then best practice, a list of best practices.
Okay. So, but I guess I would have to do a bit of pushback on getting all, you know, every single school. So should we say compare sample?
Sure. Best practices, regional information, I think is fine, but as long as we know that your regional teams are looking school by school, we don't need that data, but I want to know how it's being addressed and what the next steps will be to help improve that.
Sorry, I still have to ask the question. What is school-specific versus division-wide data mean? I don't understand what's being asked for, so it's hard for me to vote for if I don't understand what's being asked for.
So I take that to mean, when you look at the total applicant pool, we were talking about the, when principals develop their own individual applicant pools for a position within their buildings, to monitor, to see what kinds of decisions they're making in terms of the candidates they're bringing in, the hires that they're doing at the school, and then the kinds of conversations that RAS and EPs would have with those principals if we see trends aren't going in the way that we would like to see them go. Does that...
But are those hires that are outside the universe of 1,873 hires?
Well, so you would have the overall universe of hires as a school division, but then we would want to look at that at a school to ensure that a principal has looked at, has brought in a diverse candidate pool, and that they are hiring when they indeed have the qualified candidate at the school.
So Mr. Moon had a comment?
I don't know whether this is where Ms. Palchak is trying to go, but, you know, if not, I am quite interested in finding out strategies to deal with the situations where, you know, some schools traditionally will always have just high percentage of certain subgroup versus not having any from some other subgroups. And, I mean, that's been a challenge for us, but that's an issue we need to tackle and we need to find the solutions for.
Yeah, because in the end, it's the principal making that decision.
And so what I take from this is to look at some of those trends and to share at a higher level, the kinds of things that we're doing with principals to ensure that they are, that, looking at a diverse pool of candidates when they're looking at positions, and then questions around hiring. If we see that you've had, you know, many diverse candidates come through, but you haven't hired any diverse candidates, is it because they weren't the best candidate? Is it because there were other factors involved? Those are the kinds of conversations that we would want to have with principals.
Okay, so with that understanding, how many people can support this? Okay, that's supported. Ms. Palchak, I believe you have the next one, it's pretty straightforward. Does that capture it?
Yeah, I think so. If you can share with us what that Gallup survey is and what conversations we're having. I thought it was Pearson, but I don't. And then next steps that you're looking to do that.
Is it Gallup or Pearson?
Gallup.
Okay, all right, how many people can support that then?
Teacher Insight, is that what it's called?
Okay.
Yes, they use it.
Okay, I need to see some hands, though.
Nobody's asking about the amount of staff time that's involved in some of these. Like, I don't know what's involved with going externally and getting this kind of survey data.
Right. What I've said is the standing, I don't want to quibble in here with you guys and staff. If something comes back, it's going to take us weeks, months, then we need to come back and go, hey, here's the challenge.
To clarify, I'm not asking for survey data. This is a survey that we currently use, Teacher Insight, as one of the data points used for applicants, correct?
And how do we, you're asking how we use it?
How we use it, it sounds like there already are conversations about how we use it and what the future of that will be.
It's a great question.
And to understand.
It is a great question to ask.
Because that definitely came up in the MSAOC conversation, so I would love to hear where we are.
Okay, how many people can support that then? All right, that's good. Mrs. Strauss?
It was fun. I also asked, in addition, whether or not we have any success in luring career switchers out of the IT industry. You may not know, but if that's not too difficult to find out.
Well, I can share that as a result of our furlough job fair, we did get two who came to our IT department from the outside.
Great, well, that's an interesting career switcher. Thank you.
Okay, all those who can support number eight then?
Eliot?
All right, let's see, a show of hands on number eight. Okay, that's supported. And now you've added one. Mrs. Strauss, do we have any success luring career switchers out of the IT? Okay.
Question, does that include international jurisdictions if people are coming?
Whatever.
Okay.
Just to see what we're doing, because that's a huge competitor within the... Let's see, how many people can support that? Show of hands, okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders? Showing number who do not choose to report ethnicity, that's on that last chart that we looked at, to make it add up to 100%. Okay, how many can support that? Okay, that's okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. McLaughlin, number 11. ROI on the recruitment and retention by subcategory.
Is there a reason we're limiting this to one to five years, my colleagues?
The reason I ask for one to five years is statistically, that is the time period in which we lose, in which school systems lose teachers. And so if during that period of time where people leave teaching, we have a disproportionate percentage from an individual subcategory, then we should be able to know that and address it as necessary.
If we expand it to across retention, I can support it. We already know we're at the national average for one to five years, so I...
But we don't have it disaggregated, Ms. Schultz, and that's what we're looking for.
I don't know that we have it disaggregated in the nation so that we can find out anything to compare it to. We're getting numbers for the sake of getting numbers.
No, actually, it's so that we can address it. So if I could have a show of hands from our colleagues...
Well, Don, I mean, first of all, this has both our names on it, and it's because yours got tacked onto mine.
No, mine was actually first, and then I, since you raised it, but go ahead.
Ms. McLaughlin, what was your desire? If we have to split it, we'll split it, but what...
I want to understand just the data, the ROI data for our recruitment and yield. So in terms of what Ms. Corbett Sanders is talking about, serving on HRAC this year, I can tell you that you can do a division-wide, it's going to tell you nothing. What you need to be looking at in terms of retention is what's going on at the building level for the retention numbers. And I don't know that that has anything to do with support. I don't think it has anything to do with recruitment.
So Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to edit this?
Break them out.
Break them, okay, so how would yours read then? Provide more data on the ROI and the recruitment of what?
More data on the recruitment, the ROI and the recruitment of new teachers.
Okay, period, okay.
Yep.
Of new teachers. Okay, and that's McLaughlin, and that's, and then we'll go to Ms. Corbett Sanders. So let's see, how many can support Megan's? Okay, now, Ms. Corbett Sanders, how would you like to phrase this?
So, having served on the board, the advisory board to the School of Education at Boston University Wheelock College for several years, I can promise you that it is an issue of retention by subcategory. And it's an issue of retention in the first five years. So understanding that, I am suggesting that for us to better understand how we are performing in this area, we do need to address it by subcategory. If people would like to have it by building level, certainly that's fine, but my concern is that's a lot more data-intensive than what I'm asking for.
Does that capture it, Ms. Corbett Sanders? The way it's reading it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, how many can support that?
You could take out the "and," so it's by subcategory over time.
Okay. How many can support number 12? Let's see, a show of hands. Okay, that's supported. 13, Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Schultz, to grow your own is working with the DOD. So when you're looking at that, consider partnering, what does that look like? You're asking, what are you asking staff to do?
Just to hear from staff whether or not there is any activity of partnering with the county on growing our own from within county services as well.
We can share our efforts on some of that work.
Okay, how many can support number 13? All right, that's a majority. Ms. McLaughlin, how much time is, how much, oh, how much is spent annually on recruitment? Is that not in the...
That's what number 11 ended up being, so we can delete that one.
Okay, so we can remove that, all right, thank you. Mr. Wilson, does this catch?
Wait, sorry, just Scott and Helen, you know what I'm talking about, the number 11, it's going to be the cost, and, yep.
Right. Mr. Wilson, this seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think it's, I think just to clarify, it's wherever there's a percentage shown, so that we have the information to determine how that percentage was calculated.
Okay.
And I think that a number of now, we have a number of next steps that pertain to identifying specific information at different schools. And Mr. Moon identified that maybe we've got some schools with a history of consistent problems. I think maybe consolidating those, so we see that sort of, you know, retention data, hiring data, et cetera, by those schools, so we can see what's going on.
How many people can support number 14 to add that, those data points? Okay. Ms. Schultz, you have the last two. Provide information on location.
Mr. Wilson's should be a for-all numbers ever, forever. That's just my point, a point I make all the time. Number 15, no, it's not location of openings, it is the, by, yes, information on openings by content area.
By content area, okay. All right, how many can support that? Let's see, a show of hands. Okay, and then last one, Ms. Schultz? Provide more information on...
I'm sorry, can we just go back? I just got a clarification from the preeminent, Dr. Ivy, by content area or grade level.
Okay, all right. And last one, more information on retention beyond five years. Have we not gotten information on that in the past? More information on retention beyond five years?
No, no, it's, provide the information on retention by subgroup.
Oh, by subgroup.
It's the Paul Harvey Russell story to your, I mean, you've got one to five, where I already know we're at the national average, I know we're at the national average.
All right, how many people can support that?
Nation and the division, but we don't have the retention for the rest.
All right, so that's the end of our next steps. So now we're going to go, oh, we're... So now we're going to go, oh, we have more next steps, I'm sorry. Mrs. Keys-Gamar?
This should be quick. One was provide information to the board showing data gathered from applicants who did not accept an offer.
Okay, and that's, but isn't that something that Dr. Bray-Bran is working on for next, next year, Dr. Bray-Bran? But let's, let's capture that.
It'll be in our report for next year, yes.
Okay, provide information showing data gathered from not hired when available?
When available, sure.
Yeah, when available. All right, let's see how many can support that. Okay, and Mrs. Strauss?
I have a question that I think you can answer now. Some years ago, quite a few years ago, we were very concerned because we knew we were approaching retirement, sort of the bulk of the, of baby boom generation, people my age, they're all gone, and concerns over principals who I now, by this time, have all retired, and then the teaching staff as well. And I know we used to have in the budget books the average age of our educational employees, and it was in their 40s. I'm assuming that we no longer have concern about a whole bunch of people retiring and leaving, because it looks to me as though all the questions that we're dealing with here are basically people in their 20s, 30s, and 40s overall. In other words, our average age of instructional employee is low enough that we're no longer concerned about old folks leaving all of a sudden.
We can pull that.
Okay.
The age, the average age.
Right, the average age, because I don't remember seeing it. But I'm assuming that that issue of, because there was a very large cohort, particularly of principals, who left and retired, who would now be in their late 60s, early 70s, and they're all gone. Yeah. Ms. Keys-Gamar, did you have another one?
Yes, this, this was, I just wanted to have it as a note, because I mentioned it when I spoke, and that was to consider developing a diverse panel to review new hires. I know we're still looking at that. Does that make sense?
Do you mean in initial vetting in HR?
I don't know how you would do it. I would leave that to your expertise, but my concern is that, I know that we had some centralization, having everybody come through, but then I think that hiring is still occurring at the principal level, and then the principal, depending on the diversity of the staff in each individual schools, that tends to reflect the diversity of the new hires. So I don't know what can happen, but I'm just trying to match the research that says if you have a diverse group of people hiring, then you tend to end up with a diverse group of people hired. So I'd like for us to look at that question. I don't know the answer, but it's just, I just wanted you to know that it's something that I'd like for you to consider.
So is, and again, are you thinking of the diverse panel being within HR, our HR department, or you're not sure? You'd like them to consider that?
Right, yeah, it absolutely does.
I get exactly what you're saying. Right now, those final calls are usually made at the school, and what's the composition of that panel? Does it need to be something central? Does it need to be something at the school with a requirement for a certain amount of diversity? Diverse panels tend to yield a greater percentage of diverse candidates as the final applicant, so, yeah, we'll take a look at it.
How many people can support this last one, then? Number 19. Okay, all right, with that, we will now turn to the issue of LT compensation. And Dr. Nixon, are you going to lead the conversation here? I'm going to assume that board members have read through the materials, so if you would just like to briefly summarize where we are on this, and then we, I do want to point out that we've taken an hour and a half, or more than an hour and a half, on the last topic, which was a very important topic, and so it makes sense that we did.
Ms. Evans, do we not need a break for the video?
No, this is still part of the same, this is still part of the same work session. So if you could just very briefly summarize, and then board members can, and one thing, if you would tell us what you are asking the board for today, so that can help guide our conversation. Dr. Bray-Bran?
Yeah, I'll take a crack. Dee, Helen, speak up. One of the things, one of the things that became clear to me last year is the board was, the board had asked the superintendent in HR to do a review of LT compensation as part of our complete review of all our salary scales. We reviewed all of our other salary scales, this is the final review. So we brought to you our best look, looking at other school districts, looking at private businesses. There's a lot of limitations to this study, not everybody puts their data out the way we do. We have unique characteristics as a school division, but we took our best crack at it. We compared our scales to, again, to the best group that we could find, and then we have by position where we are for our midpoint of the scale, under or over the market, and we have some recommendations about how I can work to provide compensation to the leadership team going forward.
Very good. So I will allow Ms. Holly Brown to introduce herself in a moment. So to Dr. Bray-Bran's points, Ms. Holly Brown will be giving an overview of the compensation study, a quick roundup of the methodology and the kinds of places where we looked at for our market comparators, and then, you know, focus the conversation on the midpoint and the very specific characteristics of certain positions.
Okay, and again, we can assume that board members have read this, so we can have it be a very high-level summary. Thank you.
So hi, I'm Dee Holly Brown, and I'm the Director of Benefits and Compensation. Dr. Bray-Bran asked me to undertake a study, which we have done. We have been collecting this data over a series of months. We're going to look a little bit at the landscape where we are right now, the methodology that we've used to take a look at this group, some findings, and then a suggested path forward. So, thank you. So this is a very content-rich slide, but really what it is giving you is FCPS and its approach to the LT. And the very first part of it deals with the segmentation that we have for the LT-1 and the LT-2 structure, and then a third type of, or a second type of compensation that's provided by contract. You can see who's covered by which, and then below that, I've given you salary ranges for those two portions. For point of reference, this LT-1 and LT-2 scale was actually, depending on your point of view, the top or the bottom of the unified scale that we used to have. Remember, we took the unified scale and split it, and this is the last vestiges of that scale. With that scale, it is called a step scale. It has increments, if you will, in between the steps, and the width is 54%. For those of you who aren't familiar with that type of scale, it's 54% in span, if you will, from the very first level to the end level for both of the LT-1 and the LT-2. Thank you. So again, content-rich, I'm going to try and be cognizant of the fact that we're moving pretty quickly and you have a limited schedule. So basically, the targeted positions were, just as I've said, the superintendent's leadership team population, so we're talking about an executive level. The survey was created built on preceding work, so that we took into account what the board's target for compensation was, which is 95 to 105% of market. The design of the survey actually evolved as we were doing the survey because of some of the things that we found. So there was a very big correlation that we found between the size of the organization and the structure and the remuneration that was provided to its executives. We did go to a national scope because we compete for talent on a national stage, and so in doing that, we made some geographic adjustments to income that was reported. So for instance, the federal market, through the Office of Personnel and Management, provides a scale, which is what we applied to this work, that recognizes that somebody in Hillsboro County, Florida, makes less money because the cost of living is less than they would in Fairfax. So we made those translations to do this work. We also looked at market segments, and really, that's about mission types. So for organizations that are in the K-12 sector, if you will, there's a local market, and then there is a national scale that we look at. There's a local government information that we wanted to make sure that we included for comparators, and then we included some private and nonprofit information as well. We also took a look at base salary and non-salary-based compensation. We asked for the data. We did not always get the data, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So there was some inconsistency with what was available. I did want to mention that the FCPS executive team or our leadership team receives a car allowance, at least some of them do. That practice was discontinued in July of '17, and it will go away through attrition, if you will. There are a lot of comparator pay structures that we found that were prevalent. One is scales with steps, like we use here. Those are most common in public sector, and they are common within the local school districts, but they are not as common with the national school districts that we looked at. They are also very common in government entities. They allowed for some really easy point-in-time, mid, mid-max comparisons, because it's similar to what we do. And all of those pay ranges are provided by step intervals, so step one, step two, step three. There are some design mechanisms for folks, and I know that the people around the table remember, we have talked a lot about increments. So what, how much of a percentage increase does somebody get between one step versus another, earlier in a scale versus later in a scale? So that is very important. We also found pay bands to be prevalent. They are the most common among comparably sized national school districts. They are more flexible than the step with scales, scales with steps, sorry, that are used here currently. So it provides for a range for that compensation, and it focuses on the specifics of someone's experience instead of tenure. We also found something that was very interesting, it's called level pay. And so there were districts who provided the same exact pay regardless of someone's experience and tenure, based on their position or role in the organization. So a good example of that would be Montgomery County pays everybody who is in instructional or the, or operational folks, based on that segmentation, and they all receive the same level of pay regardless of when they've entered the organization, when they entered the LT, et cetera. Three local K-12s use that structure for some positions, but not all, so that complexity is ratcheted up because they use different approaches for different members of their executive team. And then lastly, we found contracts, which are, of course, individually negotiated, and they actually contain information well beyond base salary and non-salary compensation, so it has a lot of terms and conditions in it. So I think it's really important to emphasize the limitations that we found that impacted our findings. So when we talk about things like surveys, commonly, we turn on the news and we hear that there's a margin of error, if you will. There is some margin of error that's built into this. I couldn't tell you whether it's 1% or 2% or 3%, but the reality is, because of the complexity of what we're looking at, there is that limitation when we are looking at this information. So the pay approaches vary among districts, they vary among the executives in the districts, and it's pretty complex. So the compensation philosophy is the next thing that impacts the approach that people use or organizations use. So the width in the increments, if they're using a scale, the promotional approach, i.e. if it's an internal candidate, do they give someone 10% or 15%? Or is it just a step up? It depends on, and affects the results of what we're looking at. Something else that's particularly impactful is whether they do merit compensation. So we do not do merit here. We do a look that is much more structured, if you will. So the merit compensation creates some fluidity in the comparators, and it adds to that level of complexity. So one of the things that was really impactful for us is data variance and the lack of availability. We went to a number of sources to make sure that we had all of this, so we went not just to individuals who were working on this, but websites and survey materials, et cetera. There was a big impact on this study on the effect of individual salaries, because a good number of the executive teams across the nations in K-12 and in private sector, the information that was available was really around what somebody is making as opposed to a scale midpoint, so it affects the data. Also, something that was particularly impactful for the Washington DC area is the natural nature of our geographic area. We have an interesting blend of urban and suburban issues. The Washington metropolitan area has a very high level of education of its residents. It is the seat of national government. It has a lot of ebb and flow based on being the seat of the national government and our military families as well. There's a significant identification and emphasis placed on special education needs, ESOL, and Title I. In addition to which, we have a reputational premium here at FCPS, so that FCPS is considered a lighthouse organization, and that is not true with the national organ, part of the national entities that we looked at. So here's the meat of the presentation. There is a very content-rich slide in front of you. Again, the market study was based on midpoints, so there is, to the left, did I get that right? Yeah. To the left of this slide, if you will, are the FCPS job titles. It then talks about FCPS salaries and the scales, so there is a midpoint that's identified and shaded for you in light blue, that's really the critical piece that we looked at. Then there is the overall market average comparators, and then the differential that is provided. And there's some outliers here, so I'm going to go really quickly through some of these outliers. The deputy superintendent is not paid on a salary, therefore, there isn't a midpoint differential available. I can't do that, that math. There are a couple of positions that were taken out of the assessment because we did not have adequate matches. One is the chief equity officer, and the other is the assistant superintendent for facilities and transportation. The chief operating officer is at 92% of market, that is outside the 95 to 105% that has been directed by the board currently. Financial services came in at 96%. 102% for human resources. Information technology is at 103%. I'm not sure my glasses are quite strong enough at this point. And then we get into a little bit of a different result. I think the assistant superintendents for instructional services and special services are considered above market, but I think this complexity really speaks to why. First of all, we're talking about the premium. There is a premium placed at FCPS, not just on being the lighthouse organization, but certain soft skills at the executive level. So we're talking about content knowledge, but we're also placing a very high premium on an individual's ability to address the public and interact with the board. There are a few organizations that we found that parameter in the job descriptions, nor was it able to be responded to when we asked our content experts that were resident in those organizations. In addition to which, we blend instruction and services for those two areas, and so that is not unique, but it is less prevalent out in the marketplace and the national stage. In addition to which, we've got the assistant superintendents for regions, and they are slightly above that 95 to 105% sweet spot, but I do believe that has to do with that premier workforce approach. Based on what we found, we have some recommendations to aid, and we'll call it an evolution. We would like to see the LT-1 group or step scale evolve into pay bands. This provides for the same width of pay, but, so it goes from the 143 and change to the 221 and change, if you will, that we saw earlier. But it takes away steps and solid or solid increments, if you will, and it offers shared market adjustments with some flexibility. So for instance, I understand the FY '20 budget provides for an average increase for employees of 3.62%, and so that's where people would move for everybody who was on the LT scale, unless the superintendent found that there was a reason to provide some additional flexibility. For LT-2, we are suggesting that we move the chief operating officer and the chief equity officer onto contracts instead of onto a second scale. It's generally agreed through individuals to have It's generally agreed through individuals to have two people. On a scale is probably not the best way to do things, just from a practice standpoint. But I think it is much more prevalent at that level relative to the group of folks that we looked at and compared to, to have that on a contract basis. So there's a number of recommendations that we've provided. And I think the benefits of recommendations are here up on the slide behind me. In effect, trying to make this as quick as possible, I think it better allows a superintendent to implement the school board policy that you guys have provided. They are, it better positions us to retain a premier leadership group for a premier workforce. They are responsible for leading this workforce and delivering on the promise of engaging, inspiring children of Fairfax County, and in doing so, helping the greater community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you summarizing that so well. So I am going to go back to the way that we have agreed to do our, our comments that rather than stop the clock, I'd ask board members to make their comments and questions in their three minutes. And anything that doesn't get captured in that first go-around, we can, we can go to next steps. So Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm going to-
Before we do that, can I just suggest we have a time constraint this afternoon? We have a hard stop at 4:30 in which we have to go into a closed session. And so I am going to suggest that we try to break this meeting at 4 o'clock, and we can go back to the subject afterwards. Actually, we have a hard stop at four to go into closed. Then we ha, then we can come back for the remainder after our closed session. But we really do, we can't spend an hour on this because we don't have the time.
So, so what you're saying is finish this up by 4 o'clock and then come back to do the calendars?
Yes.
After we are enclosed?
I'm sorry, some of us have a principal community meeting, a principal selection panel. We've got to be at that.
I understand that.
Well, but we, we have people coming for the closed, correct?
That we have no flexibility on.
No, I'm talking about the school calendar discussion. I don't think that two of us should be forced out of it because we have an established community.
Well, there is, there is one-
There will be time afterwards before you all head off, but I'm telling you, we are limited in time, and we spent a lot, I wish that the la- I understand that. Thank you. So, Ms. Evans, do you want me to continue on?
Yes, if you would take your three minutes and-
I will use less than three minutes. First, I want to thank Ms. Holly Brown for her excellent work on this. I know that it has been a, has necessitated a new way of doing an analysis. This is something that the board asked for over two years ago, so we are glad that it has been brought to us. I do think that the board needs additional information on this. We, it would be helpful to have the translations that were made from other areas of the country and adjusted for the DC metro area. Additionally, I think we all need to understand a bit more about how your recommendations on the pay bands and how we would ensure transparency to the public and to the board as to how adjustments in pay scales would be made for individuals. Because there is an expectation, these are executive level, executive level salaries, and with executive level salaries, there's a higher expectation, you call it a premium, not only for being paid well, but to be held to a higher standard of accountability and transparency. And so I would just ensure that as we move forward, that we, we talk a little bit about how those bands would ensure that accountability, transparency, and also if we could have job descriptions provided for each of the, each of the groups that are represented here. As far as the reputational premium, I do think that this county does pride itself on being the best and the brightest. And so when we set the pay scale of 95 to 105% for all other areas of the system, it was because of that premium. And so it would be helpful to understand a little bit more on how we established the comparable with other systems. And to better understand, in particular, the, there are a couple of jobs that you say are hard to, hard to calibrate. And so if you could provide to the board exactly why they're so hard to calibrate, because this is all new stuff that we, unlike the previous session where we were able to dive into it at the board table last week, we are just seeing this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Schultz?
So if we could go to slides two, please. And it's all well and good that we're all being dictated how we can talk to staff, but I think that's a terrible idea, and if I need to take it to the forum, I will. We have a 54% width. I'm assuming that means from the beginning of the salary range to the end of the salary range. So can you explain to me who, what, what minimum step one is in terms of getting on that scale? Like who we would hire? I don't know how many years of, I don't know what professional level equivalency somebody at step one would be. But to hire somebody in at an LT position and to imagine they have the effect of 18 years to get to seniority on this, doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, each step is effectively a year, like it would be on teacher years. And there's nobody that I would think that you would hire at a senior, at a senior level in this organization and say, "You have 18 years to maturation." So I, I don't understand that. If you could explain that to me. And what's the, why 54%? And then if you go to slide five, and my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders got to this to some degree. On the one hand, I don't understand the, the comparison necessarily to other jurisdictions because as we've indicated, for example, the assistant superintendent for special services. How do you compare that to surrounding jurisdiction? Our special, our students with disabilities population is larger than the entire population of Arlington County. So what they pay their assistant superintendent of special services is irrelevant, I mean, is literally irrelevant to me because of the, the level of complexity. So the size and the complexity of the job is more important to me than the title. So I don't know if, we, we have only compared to size and complexity of job jurisdictions, but I don't think we probably have. And so if we're comparing, if we're, you know, keeping up with the Joneses with our neighboring jurisdictions, so what? I'm in a so what, I don't care. But the bigger point is, is where is the accountability? And if you could go to the next slide, I think. So the LT contracts, putting people on a band and saying, "Well, you're going to get paid, you know, mid, mid, mid-max," based on what? You know, to me, it's, you know, what are the goals? You know, is there a student achievement goal? Is there a, you know, cost minimization goal? Is there, you know, in accordance with our, our values? You know, where's the resource stewardship? You know, where's the premier workforce? Have you moved any of these numbers in premier workforce if you're in, in HR? So, you know, to me, we've kind of landed back in the teacher model and not at an executive of a $3 billion entity model. And that's what I'm missing in, in this.
Would you like to respond before I go to the next?
Would like them to respond.
So let me talk about the scale first. So the scale is structured to represent experience or tenure, all right? So when we hire somebody from the outside, it's applied a little bit differently than when we hire somebody from the inside. So the job descriptions in general for this level require eight to 10 years of experience, okay? In addition to which, if you have somebody that is, has progressed internally, they go in from whatever, whatever area, or excuse me, whatever step they were previously being compensated at. So I'm going to say Schedule C and maybe step 14. You add 10% on that and go to the next highest level for the steps that are currently in the LT1 scale. So it represents a promotion. And at this organization, we currently have a promotional pay policy of 10%. So the step starts to lose its link to experience, if you will, as the person is promoted from Schedule C and onto the LT scale.
So, I'm sorry, I have to ask for a clarification on that. So i, i, if, if these require 10 years, eight to 10 years experience?
Ms. Schultz, could you put that on a go-back? I'm sorry, Ms. Schultz-
Okay, so I'm going to just fundamentally say this is the problem with three, you, three minutes. They, they provide answers, and you're unclear, and then you have to wait for the entire go-back in order to get to clarification.
This is what the board agreed to, Ms. Schultz. Okay, if you could, if you could-
If their answer generates an additional question, then we don't get our question answered. And then we're all the way back to, oh, now you got to get back to answering my question, which is what I asked the first time around.
That's, that's a go-back. So do you have more of a response, Ms. Schultz?
I think we'd probably like to provide it in writing.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to have answers to the questions that I asked about performance goals, what the 54% represents and why 54%. And I'll go, do a go-back on the complexity issues of, of the, that, that range right there. But I would like an answer on my 54% and the performance goals.
So the 54% is a midpoint, if you will, relative to executive compensation in the jurisdictions that we looked at. So there is a jurisdiction to the south of us, for instance, that uses four different scales for its executives, and they range anywhere from 81% to, I think, 32% in width. So that comparator is difficult, if you will, but it gives you an idea of where step scales are and how they function. The most common midpoint that I've seen in my practice is closer to 45 to 50%. But I don't believe that moving to that particular scale is going to benefit us because I'm not suggesting that we use step scales.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I think going to a band is a, I think is a wise move. And for many of our employees who service in these capacities, you're correct that we are seen as a lighthouse district in quality. And our leadership team is critical that they walk on water. We expect that, and it's not only in content, but they're community-facing. Many school divisions do not expect the kind of direct interaction with the community that we expect of our, of our leadership team. And that, that really does add an extra requirement for those jobs. I am more concerned about the fact that we are often lose people. They're hired away because most jurisdictions see Fairfax County Public Schools as the best training ground for senior leaders in other school divisions and across the nation. A lot of those leaders did start with us. So I want to make sure that whatever we do with our pay scales, that we have an eye toward not only attracting very good people, but keeping them as long as we can, knowing that we are training others who are in attendance. But I don't want to see good people hired away because they are offered a better job than what we're offering them. So competitiveness at this level, I think, is very, very important. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Thank you. I want to start, I think Ms. Evans opened the question with, she wanted to make sure we understood what you were asking us, and I didn't hear that. I think you said that, yes. So I want to make sure we get that because we can, that can be a guiding, a, a better guide, I think, to our discussion. So I'm going to ask for an explanation of a few things I noticed and note in here about car allowance being discontinued with, you know, according to attrition. I'd like to know what that looks like. On page five of the superintendent's leadership team, I'm trying to get a understanding. I don't have the context, and it could be because I just kind of blew through it just now. So I, it could partly be my fault. I agree with some of the questions. I think we started with Ms. Corbett Sanders. So she asked a number of the questions that I'm concerned about because I'm not sure exactly how the translation from one area to the other took place. You said that there were some positions that were excluded. I think we still need to know what those salaries are. And, and the last question would be, you mentioned in, when you were talking to Ms. Schultz, about a 10% with respect to how you hire people, and I'd like an explanation of that as well.
Okay. Did you have an immediate response to?
Sure. When I spoke about 10%, that's called a promotional policy. And if we hire somebody into the LT team and we do it internally, so we're elevating someone from inside, and we apply a 10% increase to their current salary. So if they're paid at a particular level on the C scale, because normally they would be coming from the C scale currently, they would be increased by 10%, and then they would go to the next highest pay step that's represented on the LT scale.
So I just want to add that, too. That, that's the promotional policy for all employees across the board.
I'm, I just want to make sure I understood it. Okay. I think there was a page five. Are these your comparison, this is in the superintendent's, right, the narrative? On page five, is this, tell me what this means.
So there is a list of local school jurisdictions. There is a list of national school districts, right? And then there is a list of local governments that were included. Not all of the local governments we would have preferred participated in the study. So for instance, Loudoun does not post anything on their website, and they do not, they did not respond to our request for information, so I couldn't include them in our study. As far as the private non, nonprofit sector, we use survey materials. So there's no actuals available from them. It is just about the survey range, if you will, of the midpoint that we looked at.
Are these median salaries? I'm, I'm trying to, there's numbers by each of these.
No, the numbers that are by those actually indicate the student head count.
Oh, the student head, okay, so you're looking at size?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right, so then I will just echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said because I'm still trying to understand the, the whole comparison.
Ms. McGlaughlin?
Hi, I know we're limited for time, so I guess I'm going to try and just approach this at the most macro level possible. This report, while I appreciate was a good first step, I'm just going to share with my colleagues. I don't understand, we asked for this so long ago, and the, the information I feel like we've gotten is extremely limited. I could not bring this out to the public and say that I have depth of understanding. I'm most concerned that we factored in to this analysis, the private sector. The private sector does not have pension systems. So when you're looking at the impact of, you know, what you're looking at for these salaries in the private sector, a lot of people will pull down this salary, but they're not going to have a pension system. And that is a, a wonderful recruitment that we have, but it is at a cost to the taxpayers. And so you're kind of saying, "We're going to give you a private sector salary, but with, you know, the pension system that we have for our, our government workers when pensions are really meant to supplement the fact that you don't typically get to pay at the private sector." I know there's nonprofits all throughout the region that pay people $400,000 a year to be the CEO. So they already, their nonprofits will pay more than what we pay Dr. Brabran for his base salary. So even the nonprofits aren't necessarily, to me, a comfortable benchmark. I want to see as a next step, at minimum, a benchmarking of our LT positions as comparable to the county government as possible. They have their deputy county executives, and that's similar to what we've got here. I think we should have been doing a benchmarking of these LT positions to other school divisions and shown, that is what I also want to see as well. Because I, I'm extremely mindful that we are a high-performance school system, and it's high demand, and our employees work extremely hard all the way up through the leadership team. So I don't want anyone to take my remarks as not appreciating the tremendous amount of work that people do. But being married to someone who's on a corporate management team and works a 70-hour week, I'm, I see it, I understand it. But I, this benchmarking hasn't been helpful because I can't distinguish, as I've noted, what, what information's coming out of the private sector for the benchmark or not. And I, I am, I do think that at minimum, we talk about one Fairfax, we talk about equity of pay. we talk about one Fairfax, we talk about equity of pay. We need to be able to demonstrate to the board supervisors and to the community, and even to our own employees, that how we've set salary at the leadership team level is similar to how leadership team is compensated over on the county side. That, to me, is a way we demonstrate that e- either we're honoring our employees, maybe we're, we're not paying as much as the county, and we have to up the game. But this, this information's too limited right now, and I, I've never understood why Aon didn't bring us this information the same time we did everybody else's. It, it's a mystery that I hope somebody else will also be asking before this work session's over.
Thank you, Ms. McGlocklin. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm gonna read a few questions and let you answer, and then hopefully come back and have time to put a couple more questions forward. Yeah, my button's on, I'm sorry. Okay, so the first question I have is, in the slide three, I think it says that the car allowance is discontinued. What was done in lieu of the car allowance, and how many still receive the car allowance, and how much is it? That's the first question.
So everybody who was hired.
Well, if you would, if you would hang on until Mr. Wilson's finished with his questions, thank you.
Okay. And this, a second question would be, in the cases, in, in certain cases, in the, in the summary, it talks about how, like, for example, with the chief operating, the chief operating officer, there wasn't comparables and analysis. So where there, did you look at where there was a, a chief operating officer, was there also the other senior leadership positions that we have here, so that we could be sure that we were comparing position to position, that the positions themselves were comparable? How about that?
Finished, okay. Thank you, go ahead.
So let me talk about the car allowance a little bit. As of July 2017, the provision of that was discontinued for future hires. So we've had three, three LT members hired after that, they do not receive it. So the remainder of the LT do continue to receive that. There was no additional compensation provided to those individuals to compensate for them not getting the car allowance versus the others who were currently employed with us, receiving that. The dollar amount that's provided in the car allowance is $9,960 annually. So.
Just a very quick follow-up on that. So when, if there was no compensation adjustment, how was that equitable to the new hires?
So based on the information that I was able to get from the surrounding jurisdictions, the national jurisdictions that are comparable, we didn't have enough data to say whether that was actually something that should be occurring relative to additional compensation. There are some jurisdictions that provide deferred compensation in a limited way, some that provide car allowances as well. But it was not as prevalent as I would have assumed at the executive level.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Moon?
Ms. Evans, she hasn't answered my second question, and I said I had other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished with your questions. We would've kept going if you, if I'd known you were continuing with your questions. Go ahead and finish all of your questions, you have another minute and 36 seconds.
Okay. And then you'll come and answer the second question that I've already put forward. So, and then I guess the, the third question that I would ask, and is, my assumption is that salaries, our salaries are public, I think that's public information. So when I'm looking at the chart on five, I think it's five, slide five, those are showing percentages of the market midpoint versus the, our scale midpoint, but not showing our actual pay. We're talking about six positions here. And so I'd like to see the actual pay and find out, to see where it is.
Is, is that the, are you finished, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so I guess the question in there is, can you provide the actual pay, so we can see? Because I think just talking theoretical midpoint, our midpoint versus market midpoint is.
Okay. So that's, so he has two questions for you to, to answer.
And yes, that, that information can be provided.
And I have a second question that you haven't answered yet.
So I believe you were talking about position analysis?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so none of the positions save the deputy superintendent were analyzed based on title alone. So title starts the process, and then you go through what the tasks and responsibilities and scope of the accountability for each of those positions. So that's where you get some of the disparity that may seem present relative to the study. So that, for instance, instructional services are not going to occur in a private sector study, right? And so we're not going to include them in our numbers. But the operational group, we do compete against the market relative to the private nonprofits, and so those numbers were included in a comparator for those positions, if you will. There was a good number of bits of analysis done relative to the position and specifics of the position versus the title, and where they are located in the organizational structure. So we did take a deep dive relative to Fairfax County. We have their org charts, we have position descriptions, et cetera, and we looked and compared across the board relative to that. So there was a good deal of effort that was done relative to what we ask people to do and what other people ask, are asked to do, perhaps with the same title or in the same area in an organizational structure. A really great example of that is the Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Transportation. There was only one other school jurisdiction that asks one Assistant Superintendent or executive team level to do safety and security facilities, which includes the design and construction piece, and then the transportation oversight as well, just as an example.
Thank you very much.
Since I have 43 seconds, Madam Chair, I'm just gonna ask another question very quickly. And this may be just a historical question that you can answer. So there's really a very few, the number of positions that we're talking about here, but yet there's two pay step charts, and they're actually fairly close in terms of the compensation numbers. Do you know why there's two, and what, historically, why we would have two with 40 different steps?
So when we had the unified scale, that actually marries or threads together how the unified scale was created and provided the separation between LT1 and LT2 that was similar to the other grades that were on that chart at that time. It's the only two grades that survive from that chart. They were split into different scales. And so historically, that's why the design looks the way it does.
And, and I can add that that split was created when Dr. Garza was here, and she created the chiefs level. There needed to be differentiation between LT1 and the chiefs for whom the Assistant Superintendents reported to.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Moon?
Okay, 16 seconds? Okay, thank you. This is a comment and a request for comments from staff members as well. Looking at, looking at that, a, my six is a little larger, so I'm gonna use my page six. When I see from, in LT scale information amongst the different Assistant Superintendent positions and overall market average comparers, a number, that, and also the differential, midpoint differential, the personality-wise, the two positions, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, for me, for me, for the school system, I consider those positions probably most important positions, because they deal with instructions. It's whether general head or special head, it's instructions, and school system is in instruction business. Other positions are super positions. But what I find very surprising from the market comparers is, you know, look at, looking at both, especially in maximum, maximum amount, when you look at those positions, the amount seemed to be lower than others. That surprised me. I'm glad that we're not in the same category, where at least we, looking at the range, our scale, we treat all the LT positions from minimum to the maximum basically the same in terms of salary compensation. Why do you think other school districts, other, I mean, I'm assuming since we are dealing with instructional services and special services, the school districts may be treating them somewhat lower than other super positions?
So I can speak to it at a fairly macro level. I think that it's important to note that these two jobs normally fall lower in the organizational structure, therefore their compensation is generally lower, number one. And number two, we ask at Fairfax to have two types of services integrated. One is the instruction, right, and the other is the service component that is kind of blended. From a philosophy standpoint, I understand that that's considered, considered to be best practice, and that's what we do at Fairfax. So the two individuals who oversee those two areas are compensated because of how we compensate our LT, and they are members of the LT structure, and they have a larger scope than they, than some of the other school jurisdictions.
Okay, so if I understood correctly, you, you were counting it down all the way?
Well, yes, but remember, you were supposed to finish all your questions. Do you have another question?
I think, I, I don't think I used up all my three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I just wanted to clarify for my own edification that, that in all those school districts, Assistant Superintendents for Instructional Services and Special Services may be lower in organizational structure, only because the scope of their duties is not as extensive as ours.
Correct.
They split up instruction and services separately, whereas our positions combine those, and hours should be elevated equal to other. Is that fair?
It's a fair generalization, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Again, you know, for me, Instructional Services and Special Services deserve my highest respect within the school system.
Thank you. Before I go to go backs, I make a couple of comments myself and, and have some questions. I, I appreciate this, that this is, this is excellent information, particularly with the comparisons. I will say, I think we need to have more data before we, we make any decisions. So one of my questions is if we have any kind of a deadline for deciding upon whether to take, to make these recommendations or not, because I do think we need another conversation. We've just seen this data, it was just posted. And so one of my questions also, well, that's one, is what deadline do we have? And secondly, to points that have been made before about specifics, I'd like to know just how many people we're talking about, when we're talking about all of these different categories, how many, how many individuals. I do think it's going to be difficult to assess this without knowing the specifics, because what we're getting is minimum, maximum, and mid-range of a band as opposed to our actuals. And I think what we, we need to somehow get, get a handle on is what our actuals are, and, and are they comparable, as, as some have said, are they comparable to the county, are they comparable to the other large jurisdictions, the ones that, that really are comparable to us? So I think we have to have a further conversation. So that, that actually is a question for Dr. Braybrand and, and our chair, whether we have an opportunity to, to come back to this, because I, I do think we need to do that. And then my last question is, you say that, that Loudoun, Loudoun didn't answer us, but isn't their information, public information, and so those are all of my questions, if you can, you can answer them. And then we'll go to go backs, and then try to squeeze in next steps.
Okay, so the contract process for the leadership team generally rolls out in the May to early June timeframe, and so that would provide a deadline of sorts relative to the new fiscal year or school year for '20. As to the Loudoun issue, it wasn't Loudoun County Schools, but rather Loudoun County that didn't respond. And no, they do not have any website information. I probably could've FOIA'd it. I would prefer not to FOIA information. In that way, we have never done that.
And my other question to Dr. Braybrand and the chair, if we are gonna come back to this issue, and if so, when?
I think I can answer that we're happy to bring it back to the whole board based on the questions that are raised here. We do have two separate dates scheduled for the budget work session, and this does have an impact on our budget. So obviously, we need to have that conversation as part of this. And so we will work on Wednesday to getting out to the whole board a date of when we can do this.
Okay, as well as the budget impacts, which we didn't have budget impacts. All right, so I'm gonna go to go backs now. I have Ms. Schultz. And if anybody else had a go back, let me know.
So I do think you need to consider putting in some kind of a complexity factor when you're looking at other jurisdictions to talk about, okay, how complex is that job versus, versus us? So some kind of like magnifier, if you will, to delineate the magnitude of that, that division versus ours. I think you need to include, to be transparent to us, for these positions, how many employees that person is responsible for, what their budget is, you know, what they're handling in terms of that category of the division, and then how many students they're responsible for. I think that's a significant way for us to understand the impact. You didn't answer my question about performance. How, how are you connecting, you know, telling me that you're hiring a senior-level individual into this organization, and that they have 18 steps of maturation on, on a scale, and they can predict their, their raises is a problem. There's, there is no organization on the planet that works that way, is, hey, look, you get to hire in at the top, you know, five or six handful of positions, and you, every year, you're gonna get a raise, and you're gonna get more money. I, I, I don't understand that at all. And then total compensation, how many times do we say salaries versus total compensation? That is, that does not represent what we're, what we're paying somebody. And differentiating total compensation with a, a total compensation-rich package becomes essential in terms of transparency to the public. They know, they calculate. When I hold budget town halls, my, my people come in, and they've done the numbers, and they know what the private sector pays, and they know what the loads are. So to, to, when we pay out of a $3 billion budget, where at four, at least $450 million goes directly into, into retirement, right off the top, that is an essential part of the, the, the conversation for how we compensate the very top individuals in this organization. And I don't feel like we're being transparent with this kind of information, and we've gotta have more time to talk about this, because this is an ineffective way. We are not conversing, we are, we are firing in questions at staff. Maybe or maybe not, we get an answer back, and then we're not allowed to discuss it again. By the way, this is being operated. I do not appreciate this. This is not, we are not being effective governors of the system by limiting and hamstringing ourselves this way.
Mr. Wilson has a go back, and then we'll go to.
Questions, please.
Well, Ms. Schultz, first of all, I'm gonna tell you, these scales have been the scales since Fairfax County started in 1870, probably. All right? So if the board wants to go in a different direction, we did merit pay when I got here in the early 90s. And we can talk about that. That's a board policy decision. So these scales have been the way they've been for years and years across many boards. If the board's interested in going in a different direction, what we proposed is a band approach, which, which would give the superintendent greater flexibility, and I'm not against tying it to performance. I would remind the board that we have brought you a strategic plan with metrics and targets. I would remind the board that we have brought you a strategic plan with metrics and targets. There weren't metrics and targets, and there haven't been for a long time. So you can't hold anybody accountable in the upper leadership if you don't have metrics and targets to do it. So I feel like I have walked a transparent walk of accountability, and we can talk about whether we want to have a compensation structure that matches that, but that has not been the structure here ever, ever. The last time there were set targets to a strategic plan was 20 years ago under three superintendents back. So I'm all candor willing, in fact, one of the things I think the board should ask is, when's the last time you discussed executive compensation as a board? It's probably been years and years. So, again, not on my watch, right? I got here, you said it hadn't been done, it's being done, and we're having the robust conversation needs to happen. But some of these issues are fundamental to the philosophical approach the system wants to take around its leadership team, and I welcome it. I, I just want to be clear, though, that I have operated coming in here to bring the board what it wants, and we can have a policy about how the board wants to look at, at senior level compensation. And this is really the, the first step of bringing the transparency I think the board has wanted and asked for. And I think we have to be deliberate, because trying to, we've, we've had something that's, we've had something in place for a long time, and we need to be deliberate about what we're doing if we want to change that compensation, and that you have all the variables in front of you as a board to look at before making a decision in, in going in a different direction.
So Ms. Schultz, if I can just clarify, this was something that we collectively asked for a couple of years ago. This has been a concerted effort by the superintendent and his staff over the past five months to, because when we raised it again, and we said, we've been asking for this for two years, Dr. Braybrand went, whoa, I didn't know that, and he took it under his advisement.
I agree completely, that we've been waiting years, and we're given three minutes, and it can't even be conversational.
Ms. Schultz, if I can finish, I will let you know what, so I agree with you. I would have preferred we had focused on this today rather than what we focused on, on that other chart for an hour and a half, if it were up to me. Having said that, you have my commitment as the chair to bring this back to the full board for deeper conversation, um, once we have more data to present. And that will be done prior to the budget this year.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, and I, and, and Dr. Braybrand, I do appreciate that this topic is coming before the board, because I do think this is the first time since I've been on the board that we've had a public conversation around this table about executive compensation. So I, I just want to make sure that I got the information correct. I didn't take notes when I asked my prior question. How many executives are still receiving the car allowance, and how much is the allowance?
Sorry, want to make sure I give you the right information.
The allowance is just under $10,000, it's nine and change.
$9,960.
And I think she said it's all, all the leadership team except three who've been hired since July of 2017.
Correct.
And, and one of the nuggets on the total comp that she shared that, that is, and we can keep talking about it too, it's hard to get some of this other compensation, not salary, from some of the competitor districts who are not interested in sharing those advantages of what they're doing or not doing for senior leadership.
And Dr. Braybrand, how many members are on the leadership team?
I don't know roughly, what, 20? Off the top of my...
Count in my fingers and toes, but I would say 18.
18.
And that was one of the questions I'd ask Mr. Wilson to, to have answered, too. So if you're finished, Mr. Wilson, we'll go to next steps. Try to do this as quickly as possible, so we can go to, to the closed session, which we, where we're supposed to be right now, oh my. All right, could everybody look at theirs and see if, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have the first three?
I think my first one sums it up, is please provide the translations that were made for converting salaries in other areas of the country, and how they were adjusted to the DC metro area, as well as detail why the two positions that aren't provided comparable data, please provide in writing why they are hard to compare with other.
I think my number four is included in that, because I think there needs to be the explanation of how they came to the 54.
Please go ahead and add it up to...
Right, it's included in the, it's included in number one, but if you could, yeah.
Cut and paste it up to one.
Include, including an explanation of the 54%.
That's perfect. And then my second one is, how do we ensure, you, you explain the pay bands as giving greater flexibility to the, to the superintendent? We want to make sure, we want to understand how we ensure transparency to the public on, oh.
You okay? Okay, okay, can we, can we see how many people?
This compensation stuff's a little touchy, makes everybody a little jumpy.
Please, so the second one is...
Well, hang on, let's, let's, let's get an agreement on that. Everybody okay with number one? Let's see, a show of hands quickly, number one, that's a majority, all right, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
The second one is regarding the recommendations to, to move to pay bands, how do we ensure transparency and accountability to the public? While giving the superintendent the flexibility that is being requested.
All right, let's, let's see how many folks can support that. Yes, that's a majority, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
The next one is provide job descriptions for each of the job categories that are being discussed.
Okay, everybody okay with that? Raise your hand, okay. Ms. Schultz, you have the next one? What, what was your, you were asking for a different comparison, were you not? I believe you were asking for a...
I ask all kinds of questions, you can answer them.
Well, so, I mean, another thing that... Well, actually, what I was going to suggest is...
Can we go to the videotape?
Well, in, in fact, Ms. Schultz, what I was going to suggest is that staff provide answers to the questions posed at this work session. I believe you've been keeping track, so anything that, that for some reason we don't capture here, if you could provide the answers, let's just make that an understanding, so, so that would...
I don't know if that was trying to capture. I, I don't think that having accountability goals for senior leadership is the same as merit-based pay for teachers. I, I, I take great umbrage at that, at that comparison, so I don't think that that's merit-based pay. I think there should be, what should have been documented is what kind of accountability measures are going to be built into any LT, LT conversion, LT pay scale conversion?
That's a question as to how they... You're, you're asking for accountability measures, period, not just conversion, but... That's what I was hearing you say.
This is proposing a conversion to this, this band, this band methodology. I mean, we're, we're talking about moving this. So whatever it is, I would like, I would like an explanation of what kind of accountability measure's going to be built into LT pay going forward.
Can we, can we just, irrespective of, because I'm not sure if the, the changeover was for everything? So I just want to understand accountability, period.
Yes.
We're there, okay. Okay, would everyone read that and see? So this is a question for the superintendent, what, how he plans to add accountability measures. All right, how many people are all right with that? Okay, that's a majority. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Number five has been answered. I asked it, Mr. Wilson answered, asked it, and we did get an answer to that. I think there were, I think that's self-explanatory.
Providing information on positions were excluded from...
They were, yeah, they were, they said they didn't have comps for them. I think we should still get a report on that.
We can get that, Chief Equity Officer and Assistant Superintendent for Transportation, Facilities and Transportation.
All right, how many people are all right with that? Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, you have the next two? For county LT as possible, and provide benchmarking for other jurisdictions. Do you want to specify what other jurisdictions, Ms. McLaughlin?
Microphone?
Or do you want comparable jurisdictions?
I believe in the appendix, Ms. Holly Brown, I believe in, it's okay. I believe in the appendix you all provided for the benchmarking. It was with four of the larger WABE jurisdictions. Well, I guess that was your government jurisdiction, so, but for the, for the, for the benchmarking against, where I said other jurisdictions, then I would say that I'd like to see that against the, the larger school districts, WABE school districts. Like, I, I mean, you can go ahead and do...
Other comparable jurisdictions, is that what you mean?
I, I'm, but I'm thinking WABE, I mean, because I, I mean, we could drill down, but they, they look like they consulted a lot.
I mean, do you...
Yeah, other large WABE, yeah.
Because you don't want, like, Manassas Park.
I don't want Manassas, Alexandria, Falls Church. You know, Arlington's as small as I would consider.
Okay, so can everybody...
Not Manassas Park, or Manassas City.
So six and seven, can we see a show of hands of how...
Well, Ms. Evans, I just want to make sure staff understands, frankly, what I want to see is where, that, just the details of your homework. I want you to have to go do anything different, just provide us with the, the charts, yeah, that you...
We have that information, we can provide that.
Let's see, a show of hands, everybody okay with that? All right, Mr. Wilson, provide the actual pay for LT members. Okay, can I also add my piece in there and, and number, I just want the number of people that this applies to, to? Is that all right with you, Mr. Wilson, if we add that in there? Okay, provide the actual pay and, and number of LT. All right, can we see how many folks can agree to that? All right, I, that's a majority. Consider putting in a complexity factor to fill the amount of other... So are you asking for us to compare with other jurisdictions? Are you asking for a comparative?
I do not think it is fair for us to compare a, a facilities and transportation position for Manassas to Fairfax County. It is completely irrelevant. Special services to special services, Arlington to Fairfax, it's a completely different job.
But is that captured in what Ms. McLaughlin asked for?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so, okay...
I don't know how they would do this, but I think it can be done.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Braybrand?
Yeah, I, I actually wanted to make sure it was captured in some way. I mean, the bottom line is, Dr. Braybrand, as you know from your LT members, the tasks they do in terms of the specific work may be different. The volume and the workload and responsibility, it, it doesn't, that, that's very similar. And so I, I frankly am concerned that we've got individuals on your LT team like facilities and transportation that's almost overseeing two departments. And so, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned about making sure that there's equity of workload and responsibility among our LT members, and then in comparable to the county government deputies.
Being mayor, being mayor, being mayor of Fairfax City and being mayor of New York City is not the same thing.
So you want true comparability, Ms. Schultz, between...
I don't think that there necessarily is the ability to have comparability, because we're the 10th largest school system in the nation. So if you're not, if they're not able to get comparable data, then the data with which we do compare needs to have a complexity factor applied to it.
Honestly, I totally, I am totally with you on this. I get this, and I, I know what, I don't know the answer about how, I don't know the factor yet, but I know the approach, and I think we can work on this, because I do think at the end, we have to decide as a system, are we really like everybody else, or there's some distinguishing characteristics about this system?
That make a difference.
That do make it unique. And then the board has to decide what that is, and what's the premium, or what's the complexity factor vis a vis the compensation structure.
Another, another school division may have lots of different types of busing, like they may have city busing and school busing, and so they may not have as complex a, a transportation system as ours. Ours is, you know, larger than Greyhound nationwide. There should be a complexity factor associated with that.
Dr. Braybrand understands how to do that. Let's see how many people can support this. Okay, that's a majority, Ms. Schultz? Oh, that, isn't that along the same lines?
You're looking at scope and oversight for this next, am I correct?
Rather not end in a proposition, so if we can, but let's...
Does that capture it, Ms. Schultz? Yes, oh, okay, let's see how many folks support doing this. Again, this, Dr. Braybrand, you understand what Ms. Schultz is asking for?
For which each LT member is responsible.
Okay, so let's see a show of hands, all right? Last one, I think it's the last one, total compensation to, for example, pensions and health benefits? Is that what you're looking for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how many people can support that? Okay, is that, is that it, Madam Clerk, or is there more?
Mrs. Schultz, could I ask whether you're looking for our comparable districts or governments' total compensation information as well?
If, if they would like to, if they would like to show us...
Well, you just want to show our...
I don't know, I don't know what's available, but I certainly would like to know what ours is, and if they want to show it in comparison, if they add the data, certainly, why not?
All right, did we, did we miss anybody?
So that would say include total compensation in, in addition to salary for each position, including other jurisdictions where available.
Okay, let's see a show of hands on that one. All right, and with that, and with the understanding that there, if there were other questions that went unanswered at this work session, I think you've captured them, and, and you can, you can come back to us as well. And with that, Mr. Moon?
Ms. Evans, can I speak to something?
Madam Chair, could I ask you one question? Since I think the desire of the board is for the chair to schedule follow-up work session on this one, whether, whether, whether it is expectation on the part of my colleagues to have all these answered prior to the work session, and whether that is possible? If you're looking for this to be done in, in April timeframe? We are in April, so...
Yeah, I would certainly, I would certainly work with my team and the chair and vice chair to schedule this appropriately. This is not something that's going to be ready in a week. But I think we have time to work through the budget process. Mr. Smith, you think sometime before we pass the budget in late May, we, we could have most of these next steps written addressed?
Certainly, we can pull this information together. A lot of it is, is supporting documentation to the report and, and to the, the overall process, and so we can get a lot of that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And that is the, the understanding that we are going to come, the, the chair's given us the promise that we are going to come back and have another conversation. So, Madam Chair, did you have another, did you...
Yes, just for the remainder of the day, if I can give my colleagues a bit of where we're at. The calendar, we do have to come to a decision on one piece of the calendar today, so that we are ready to vote on next year's start of this school year at the end of this month. The second piece of the calendar discussion, I have just made the decision, I hope you don't mind, Vice Chair Moon, that we will not have a forum topic at the 25th of April School Board meeting, and instead, we will use that as a work session period to cover the topics of the calendar that we're supposed to be covered today, so that we can accommodate the need for many of our board members to leave the table promptly by 6:00. Does that work for everybody?
It does, and I, we, my Robinson community appreciates that.
Together, we can do great things. So with that, Ms...
Our Robinson community, Ms. Schultz, I have 75%.
Excuse me, can we go ahead, since we're short on time, to let Ms. Palchuk cover the one piece of the calendar we need to get done?
We're going to go quickly through 2019, 2019, 2020...
Well, we're going to go quickly through 2019, 2019, 2020. There are two proposed changes. I know Dr. Hickson will be giving the presentation, but essentially, one change that we had looked at in order to help address, you know, issues around having kids in school during presidential primaries, so one amendment was to be closed during, on March 3rd. And the other is that there are good things about being able to start before Labor Day, but that comes with a requirement from Virginia to also be closed on the Friday before Labor Day. So staff will share their recommendations on how they recommend we address that change for next year, and hopefully, we can get through this rather quickly so we can have, have it ready for a vote on April 25th. So just next year's school calendar.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, can we start with March? Because I think, just in terms of the swap there is a little bit easier. The School Planning Day was moved from Friday, March the 13th, as indicated by the box, to Tuesday, March 3rd, to accommodate for the primary presidential election. So that was the swap that was made there in March. To accommodate the holiday at, the Friday prior to Labor Day, which is the 30th, Friday, August 30th.
With just a nugget to say, this is now what the Governor has required with the King's Dominion law.
So, we moved the Friday, October 4th, teacher workday to Friday, August 16th, and that is an optional work from remote location for teachers. So those were the 1920 changes that were presented to accommodate for the presidential primary election and for the newly mandated Friday prior to Labor Day day off for employees less than 12 months.
And just a nugget for the Board, we actually opened this school year with that Friday optional alternate location. It was a big success with our faculty and with our principals, so we're just putting it back in for this coming year's calendar.
Thank you. I have Ms. McLaughlin, and anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Moon.
So I know we're pressed for time, so I just want to share with my colleagues, in case you come back to talk about this and I'm not here. I am very opposed to bump, starting two weeks before Labor Day. I'm hearing from...
McLaughlin, can we focus on, this is just next year's calendar?
Okay.
The 2020 calendar, we will...
Talk on the 25th. We're not coming back to this.
We're just focusing because of timeliness on...
On just this coming fall.
Next year's calendar.
Right, this coming fall. Okay.
That is just the one change we already discussed about the March change, and now the only other change is how to accommodate for the new required closing on the Friday before Labor Day.
Okay. I, I will defer to my colleagues and listen to them first, then.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Just for the clarification, so with the, with the proposed changes, October 4th, 2019, will be a school day?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for our colleagues? Please keep in mind, this is coming up for our vote on April 25th.
April 25th.
Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Ms. Palchuk, I want to just personally thank you and Dr. Bray-Bran and his staff on being flexible and adaptable to come to us with a creative solution regarding the, accommodating the new schedule set by the Governor. It's unfortunate that they did not give us a waiver for this year since we'd already set the calendar, and it will be very important, and I would like to know how we're going to message this to the community, that this was not something that we, we chose to take away or to, to change our calendar, but we are accommodating it, and I feel that this is a good solution.
And Ms. Kies-Gamara, and then Ms. Schultz?
I guess I'm just trying to understand. Okay, so the first day of school is the 26th, where we would have that Friday off, correct?
That's right.
And there's no other changes? I didn't know if there had been discussion of trying to accommodate any other holidays, or is that discussion coming later?
So for next year's calendar, that discussion, this is, was already an approved calendar, so that is not here. The only thing I did hear from the Jewish community is they had actually, and this was unintended, a happy change, is that because they're on different months, many students will be out on, I believe, I can't read it, September 30th, Yeshua Shoshana, and then there was a holiday that same week. So I know some parents were concerned that they would be missing two days that week, so this will be a happy change, not planned that way. But I know for other holidays, that is my follow-on, that will come for the next session, for the next calendar, but at this point, this is where we were with next 2019 calendar. Is that correct, Dr. Nixon?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So it is just the, the two minor changes, tweaks to next year's calendar. Okay, Ms. Schultz?
Two questions. In our successive calendar conversation, have we finally had a discussion about moving quarter end beyond the Friday, so the kids are not, so the kids have the weekend? Do you know whether that's part of our successive conversation? Ms. McLaughlin has left, or she's over there, but she knows the conversation. So I will be bringing that up in our successive conversation, because if you look, all these quarter ends are on a Friday where the weekend would have been the give to the students that if we make the quarter end actually on the Monday, it gives students extra time, and it's a stress reducer for students. So I just, that's a patent visual to student stress. And then you notice that once again, this, even though it's already approved, this is another approved calendar that does not allow for the only federal holiday we continue not to recognize on our calendar, which is Veterans Day. And I take a front that we haven't figured out. We figured it out when the government mandates it, when the Governor mandates it, which is great. The federal government has mandated a federal holiday that we have not figured out a workaround for. But I am grateful that the Virginia General Assembly has finally rectified King's Dominion law, which benefited business and not students. So I want that on the record that I'm very grateful for years of advocacy to get rid of the King's Dominion law. Good job.
Thank you. Can I get a show of hands? Are people comfortable with this moving forward for our April 25th vote to tweak next year's calendar? Okay, wonderful. Please let us know if there are any issues. Thank you so much, Dr. Nixon, your team, and Michael, and we look forward to, the next conversation, I believe, will be a pretty lengthy one, so please review what's been posted for the 2020 calendar and come ready with questions or feedback. Okay?
So ladies and gentlemen, we will now make a motion to convene our closed meeting. The Board will make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment performance, salaries, demotion, resignation, and disciplining of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant, folks, I need some attention here, specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and two, consult with legal counsel regarding litigation in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7 and AA of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel issues, and three, to dispense with the attendance of the Superintendent or his designee pursuant to Section 22169 of the Code of Virginia during a portion or all of the meeting. Do I have a motion? A motion made by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Palchuk. All those in favor? That is unanimous with all those in the room. Can I please ask that people carry their nameplates into closed session? Thank you.